I'm going to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to The Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV, and we ask that everyone please be mindful of speaking into the microphone so we can get a clear recording. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Black. For the United States of America, to be followed by the Constitution, by our nation, by our government, and to live with liberty and justice.
For the call, please.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Von Clayton. James Banano. Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor. Eric Gallopp. Daniel Shanameo.
Here.
Anita Barnes. Rick Lambert. And Chair Kerzak.
Okay, on the agenda is a resolution for approval for Partner Properties LLC. Does anyone on the board have any modifications or concerns about that resolution? If not, can I get a motion to pass that resolution?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I have to abstain because I did not, I was not present on the last day.
Okay, anyone else have an issue as far as voting? Everyone else vote?
I should.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing we have are minutes for June 27th, 2022, regular meeting. Anybody have any questions or concerns about that, those meeting minutes? If not, can I get a motion to pass those minutes?
So move.
Second.
I'm also absent on that one, so I cannot vote.
Okay.
I cannot, Jen Sauter cannot vote either.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
We have a quorum for that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have minutes for July 11th, the regular meeting. Any concerns? All right, if not, can you please get a motion to move those forward?
So move. I'm sorry, Barbara, I'm in there.
Okay.
I was at the date wrong. It's a 7/11. I was not here. The previous I was.
So we're voting yes?
I'm voting yes for the previous, and I'm abstaining from this.
The previous one for June 27th?
Okay, June 27th, that's the one you are voting yes on.
Correct.
But July 11th, you're abstaining.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry. All right, we need a second on July 11th?
A second, yes.
Anyone have a conflict there? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. Except for Jennifer, right?
I'm abstaining, yeah.
All right, we have our application, it's up. JLD Investment Group, please step on up.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. Mr. Passata, as you know, we had some conversations today, so as we indicated, we'll put on the record related to...
Walk into the mic.
As you would, as you know, we had some conversations today, so we just have to place on the record the objection from Mr. DeSano related to those conversations. Since it's your application, you understand the situation. If you could just speak to that to the board, we'll let Mr. DeSano talk about it as well, and then the board maybe take some comments from myself.
So first, let me just make my appearance, Matthew Passata, on behalf of the applicant JLD Investment Group LLC. Just to clarify, you'd like me to recap today's conversations?
That is correct.
Okay. Today, we had a temporary restraining order hearing before the Honorable Judge Thornton from Monmouth County Superior Court. The reason being was to enjoin this hearing for moving forward tonight. Mr. DeSano had made the objection that this hearing should not move forward due to a deficiency in notice itself, specifically that there was a jurisdictional issue, and therefore this board could not move forward, at which time I had had an opportunity to say my client's position on that matter. Specifically, when it comes to notice, there's two requirements. One's on the public side, one's on the private side. For the public side, the requirement is the first week of any calendar year, you have to provide a list of all your regularly scheduled hearing dates, which I believe this board has done. On the private side, our requirement is to provide public notice to the generally circulated newspaper, and then also to provide public notice to all properties with 200 feet. We've satisfied both of those requirements. At the last land use hearing, it was also carried to this hearing date. On the council agenda on the city's website, it says on August 1st that this application would be heard. And when you go to the planning board website and identifies this application, it has in parentheticals the hearing dates, including this most recent one of tonight, that this is the hearing date that this matter is being carried to. Underneath that exact title block, it identifies each document that's to be entertained by this board. One of those documents is a report prepared by my title expert who will be presenting here tonight, which specifically states that that would be heard on August 9th of 2022, which is a misrepresentation, as that would be the hearing night for the zoning board, not the planning board. As argued before the judge, that issue itself was a typo. The jurisdictional requirements that are required pursuant to the municipal land use law has been fully satisfied. The requirement of the website subscript is not a requirement of the municipal land use law, not to mention that to enjoin the matter, the test is whether or not there'd be irreparable harm. Given the nature of this application, being specific that we couldn't quote-unquote "demo" a church the following day, because as we all know, there also would be required a final hearing in the event that this board would find favorably, the arguing could not be made that it was irreparable imminent harm. And because of that, the judge has denied the enjoyment and advised the objecting attorney that there would be another opportunity to appeal this matter if in fact that he decided to move forward with an objection.
Okay.
Mr. DeSano, you want to speak to that?
Sure.
Just one thing before you do reply, Mr. DeSano, I think that this board is, would like to know, and I do as well, who do you represent?
Myself.
So you're representing just yourself, not any other, nobody else in this room?
Right.
Okay.
I, I've never seen a motion applicant speak second, but here we are, and I will, and I hope that I can clear up some of the things that Mr. Passata...
Say it in the mic, please.
I hope I can clear up some of the things that Mr. Passata didn't say. After the last hearing, this body said that we would hear testimony from the applicant's expert tonight, and that is permissible for this body to do. And what the municipal land use law says that after you make a pronouncement like that here, you still have to do some kind of a notice requirement to the public. And there's another statute that says you may satisfy that by putting something on the internet, and that's fine, and that would have been fine. What happened was, and that's for the benefit of people who didn't make the first meeting, by the way, because they still have the right to follow up to this one, because they have the right to cross-examine that expert and the right to put in their own evidence. The first and only notice that was put up by the planning board is that that witness, Mr. Grabus, would testify not tonight, that he would testify on August 9th, a week from now. That is the only notice that was put up, that was the only notice that the public had the right to see. And if they're, the claim is, well, there was also a notice that there would be a hearing tonight, there's an ambiguity there, because they said his testimony, the person they have the right to cross-examination, right to cross-examine would be one week from now. I want to make clear, I didn't wait till any last minute. I know someone had said something about me doing that last time, and it wasn't true. I first contacted your counsel at 8 o'clock this morning and said, here's the situation, you have the wrong date up for this man's testimony. The law says you have to give the public 48 hours' notice, and as of this morning, you had given them simply the wrong date, so you did not give them 48 hours' notice. I tried to work it out with your counsel, and he makes an excellent point. He can't just put it off, and the board chair can't put it off, because then you run into the problem where you've wasted too much, not wasted, pardon me for that, we've taken too much time together, I'll include myself in that, and their application would then be granted as a matter of law. So his hands are kind of tied, so he has to defer to Mr. Passata to say, well, you see, what I'm looking at, there is simply no, there's no notice to the public, there's an incorrect notice that has misled the public, asking him if he would put this off, and he has decided he would not put it off. Understanding that you are volunteers, that most of the people in this room are not getting paid, and that Mr. Passata's clients have to pay every time there's work, I took it upon myself to use my own time, money, and effort, and I filed a complaint in lieu of prerogative writ, and I asked the court to put this hearing off and allow the planning board to renotice the public by way of a notice that was not incorrect, because we don't know how many members of the public looked at it and said, good, I'll put it on my calendar for next week. To be clear, the judge did not say today that my application was wrong or meritless, the judge did not say my application was right. What the judge said, Mr. Passata said this correctly, that to get a temporary order, temporary restraining order to stop you tonight, I'd have to show irreparable harm. And as the judge pointed out, you're not going to tear the church down tomorrow. But what the judge did make clear was, see, notice requirements are jurisdictional. If you don't follow the notice requirements of the law, jurisdiction literally means speak on the law, jurisdiction. You lose the right to speak on this as a board if you don't follow the notice requirements. So what the judge said was, look, I can't stop them tonight, but you can come back tomorrow after the meeting, and you don't need irreparable harm at that point, and you can show me if there's a violation. If you're correct and the law's on your side, I can void the whole thing. And then they'll have to pay to come back and start all over. You will have wasted an evening. So the judge not, didn't indicate which way she was going to rule, but she simply said, tonight, I don't have the irreparable harm for her to rule tonight, that issue goes away tomorrow. So I don't, I certainly hope I'm not going to be subject to any claims, that I waited till the last minute, I tried all day to fix this, I used my own time, money, and effort. And of course, since you violated the law, which says you have to give people 48 hours' notice of his testimony, by the way, the city changed it at noon. So you gave the public, so somebody understood the importance of getting that right, they changed it at noon and gave the public seven hours' notice. And I'm sorry that this happened, it is not my fault, and I did my best to show respect for you, used my own time, money, and effort to fix it. So it's going to be probably, I'm going to appeal to the chair to put this off, and to Mr. Beekman to put it off, I'm sure they're going to say, we're going to have to defer to Mr. Passata, and it's going to be up to him. But it's all going to be pointless, because it is uncontroverted fact that you didn't give the public, not only didn't give them notice of when he was going to testify, you misled them and told them he was going to testify next week. So I leave it to the chair, Mr. Beekman.
So just a couple of comments that I have. I have spoken to Mr. Passata about the matter, and I explained to him that he has an option. His option is to proceed at his own risk, and his client's option is to proceed at their own risk this evening, and that risk would be the potential for an appeal, claiming that there was improper notice or jurisdictional defect, or the option would be to carry the matter and extend the time for their automatic approval. As the board knows, we are at a point where we're beyond the time for an automatic, beyond the time where statutorily we're required to act on this preliminary major subdivision. The applicant has consented to adjournments or extensions of that time at our previous hearings, but the applicant and the applicant's attorney have indicated to me, unless there's any change this evening, that they wish to proceed. And my advice to the board is, if the applicant is willing to take the risk and proceed, we need to proceed, because we cannot be back to a corner where there's an automatic approval for the application, because the applicant does not agree to extend the time again to carry this matter to another date. So unless, Mr. Passata, you or your client are asking for an extension of time, and I'm not going to ask you this yet, we have to proceed in the matter. Secondarily, what, and I want to mark this document as part of the record, because this is the document we're talking about. The calendar clearly indicates that the August 1 meeting of the planning board is the only meeting of the planning board this month. The agenda this evening clearly indicates that JLD Investment Group LLC, 701 705 Second Avenue, is on the agenda for tonight, and it's the only matter on the agenda tonight. At last week's hearing, which was the third hearing on this matter, at last week's hearing, the matter was carried on the record with consent of the applicant to extend the time for the automatic approval. And the applicant has satisfied their jurisdictional notice requirements according to the MLU L by sending notice to the 200-foot list, by sending notice in the paper. And by the way, if you recall, not only was it one notice, but the applicant sent two notices. The first notice was a regularly scheduled meeting on June 27th, I believe, that whatever that Monday, it might even have been the 20th, but whatever that Monday night was. The second notice was a special meeting that we had on July 18th, that because it was a special meeting at a different time, the applicant had a notice specifically for that. That matter was carried to last week's hearing on the record, as well as with the consent of the applicant. Last week's hearing, the matter was carried on the record with the consent of the applicant. So the applicant has their own position, the objector has his own position, this board needs to proceed if the applicant's not willing to extend the time any further and ask the matter to be carried. So at this point, I'll turn to Mr. Passata and ask him, do you understand, does your client understand the risk of proceeding this evening?
Yes, we would like to move forward. I want to also clarify that the question before this board is whether or not there's a notice requirement for this hearing itself. That's underneath the Open Public Meetings Act, okay? OMA. And OMA requires that there's a special hearing that you must provide notice, being the public entity, 48 hours in advance. That's not what's being contemplated here. This was merely a part of the attachment that stated that the date of that report would be heard before this board on August 9th, which is in no stretch of the imagination a requirement of the municipal land use law, or the case law, or anything else that would require municipality to post underneath the subscript of a report when it was to be heard. And I also want to bring the board's attention to the fact that on that same webpage, at the very top, it says JLD, it specifically states that it's to be heard at tonight's hearing. So with that being said, we do wish to move forward.
So for the record, I just want to, this is what was on the website. I'm going to mark this B1. I don't think we have any markings, because everything else was submitted in advance, but this is B1. We'll put this as part of the record. Okay? Okay? Mr. DeSano?
Is that at the 898?
It does. Yes, it does. It doesn't have the Asbury Park, because it doesn't print, but it is what was on the website.
All right, let's proceed.
All right, I just want to confirm, we have five eligible voting members tonight?
We have six, I think.
I believe we have six.
We have six.
We have six. Yeah, sure. Thank you so much. So again, my name is Matthew Passata. I represent the applicant, JLD Investment Group LLC, in connection with this fully conforming preliminary major subdivision application. As this board is well aware, what we're proposing to do here tonight is to subdivide the existing lot into six fully conforming lots itself. At our prior hearings, we've heard the testimony of our engineer, planner, and historical architect to confirm the fact that this application is fully conforming, and in fact, there is no historical designation for the site that would thwart any type of residential development here. At the last hearing, there was a challenge as to the expert witness that we had pro offer, despite the fact that we were instructed that we could have a member from our firm, to avoid any uncomfortable situations, and obviously to be conscientious of the request of the board and to adhere to it. We have since retained a subject matter expert in title review, who I assure you does not have an ESQ at the end of his name, but he has pretty much every other type of subscript you can ask as it relates to title. With that being said, I would like to offer my first and my only witness, Mr. Joseph
Do you want to mark the report? So I think we're at A3. Why don't you, Mr. Grabus, you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
I want you to forward to your witness.
Thank you. Joe, can you please provide educational credentials?
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree in history from Monmouth University, I have a master's degree in history from Monmouth University. I have completed all of the coursework to become a licensed title insurance producer in the state of New Jersey. I have worked in the title industry for 44 years, since 1978. I started out as a title searcher, worked my way through, operated a, owned and operated title agency, actually several title agencies. I owned and operated a surveying company, although I'm not a surveyor. And in 2015, I sold that, my businesses, and since then, I've worked as an independent land title expert, forensic title expert, and title consultant, and title educator.
In your experience, did you ever have to review deed covenants, restrictions, or easements?
In every single one of the 100,000 titles that I've been involved with, yes.
Okay, and did you ever have to provide an opinion about your fact findings and conclusions to your title review?
Yes, quite often. I've appeared before this Superior Court of New Jersey in several matters and testified, and have been accepted as a witness. I've provided expert reports, depositions. I've served as a boundary line commissioner at the request of the Superior Court of New I've been engaged by the state of New Jersey as their title expert in a variety of matters that have gone to the appellate division and have been affirmed.
Thank you. This is board accept as an expert, as a certified expert in title review?
Yes. Have you, so you have been deemed a title expert in New Jersey courts?
Yes, I have. Over a dozen times.
Fine with that.
Any objections from board members?
Anyone?
Okay, proceed.
Do you want to open it to the public?
Yeah. If there's anyone from the public that has a question specifically about Mr. Grabus's expertise, you're welcome to go to the microphone.
Do you mind if I sit at a table?
No, you want to sit right over here, as long as you have a microphone there.
Mr. Grabus, so we don't waste time, I'm not going to voir dire you on your expertise in title work, and I'll concede that. But the beginning of, the beginning part of this hearing was supposed to be on the issue of whether James Bradley was acting as...
I'm sorry, that's not the line of questioning we're dealing with here. We're talking, the questions were supposed to be about his experience. Do you have any questions about Mr. Grabus's experience that he just spoke about?
Just for point of clarification, this is the night that we're going to be deciding whether James Bradley's deed was a public or private instrument, correct?
You will have an opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Grabus.
Well, I want to voir dire him on his understanding of that area of government laws when it comes to the 1800s. That's what's in issue tonight, so I get to examine his credentials on that.
Okay, but I don't think it's appropriate to specify James Bradley. I think it's, if you have a question for him about his knowledge of title history in general and his expertise, then fine.
I was conceding...
But if we're going to talk about James Bradley specifically, wait until cross.
I was conceding his title expertise to save time, but I see that's been ruined, so I'll continue. You said that you majored in history in college at Monmouth University.
That is correct.
And in, history is a broad topic, which topics in history did you study?
Specifically, the land title, history of land title development in New Jersey is my focus.
And did that involve any history of land title in Asbury Park?
Absolutely.
And that involved any of the deeds of James Bradley? Have you ever testified on that subject when you were an expert before?
As far as James Bradley?
His deeds.
I've never testified on James Bradley.
About his deeds, I mean.
No, I believe this would be the first time testifying about his deeds.
Did you publish any work that talked about or mentioned the deeds of James Bradley?
No, I published a book called Owning New Jersey, which is about the development of land titles in New Jersey.
The, a topic that is related to this is government. Was any of your historical education in the history of governments?
Yes.
Okay, was it specifically the governments of New Jersey?
Yes.
Was it involve the history of the government in Asbury Park?
I've done my own research in that area.
Was that for the purposes of this hearing?
No, I'm a Monmouth County Historical Commissioner, have served for the last 10 years. I'm very familiar with the history of Monmouth County, and in that part, also familiar with the history of Asbury Park.
And have you, have you written anything on the history of Asbury Park?
I don't believe I've written anything that was published.
Have you given any lectures on the history of the government in Asbury Park? Nothing further, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, proceed.
Thank you. Joseph, are you familiar with the subject site?
Yes, I am.
Did you have an opportunity to visit the site?
Yes, I did.
Have you had an opportunity to review the land use application?
Yes.
Have you had an opportunity to review the title prepared by Prestige Title Agency dated May 3, 2022, for this subject property, which was submitted as part of the record for this application?
Yes, I did.
And did you also have an opportunity to go to Monmouth County Record Hall to do your own independent search, separate from the title search performed by Title Title Agency dated May 3?
Yes, I did. Once I received the Prestige title report, I went to the record room and I searched the titles again myself, verifying the information that was set forth in the report.
And what else have you done in order to study the subject site?
I've done quite a bit of research, various sources, the session laws of New Jersey with relation to the creation of Asbury Park and Neptune and Ocean Grove and Ocean Township. I reviewed portions of Franklin Ellis's history of Monmouth County from 1885, which would have been a contemporary account of the history of Asbury Park, and which specifically talked about Mr. Bradley and his development of Asbury Park. In fact, Ellis provides an excerpt from Bradley's own words as to how he came upon finding and developing Asbury Park.
Okay, and did you also have an opportunity to prepare a report that concludes your fact findings and conclusions based on the title search you did independently, and also Prestige title search?
Yes, I did.
And can you please describe to the board your fact findings and conclusions?
My conclusions were several. First of all, that there are no recorded restrictions in any of the Bradley deeds or any of the chains of title which would prevent the proposed subdivision that's before this board. There are only three specific restrictions that in any way relate to building, and the first would be a 25-foot setback line from both Third and Second Avenue, the other would be a 15-foot setback line, that'd be building setback line from Bond Street, and then finally, that no fence higher than four feet would be any closer to Second or Third Avenue than the 25-foot setback.
Would you review those for us once again, slowly?
Okay. So the first is a 25-foot building setback from both Second and Third Avenue.
This parcel only fronts on Second Avenue?
Well, the original lots that were acquired, okay, out of Bradley, fronted on both streets. And so portions of those lots are still part of the... And so portions of those lots are still part of the current tax law. So when you search the title back, well, that way it gets bigger as you get back, and that's why.
Understood, okay, thank you for that clarification. The second one is?
And the second one is a 15-foot setback line from Bond Street. And then the final one would be a 25, no fence higher than four feet could be closer to the street than 25 feet, which is the same as the setback line for Second and Third Avenue. There was an additional restriction as to a building within five years of the date of the deed. Of course, that time has passed, so that restriction is expired, has long since expired.
Now, did you also have an opportunity to read Mr. DeSano's report?
I did.
And can you please provide to the board your fact findings and conclusions based on his report?
I disagree with his conclusions, and I found numerous factual errors in his report.
Can you please highlight those?
Objection. He did not issue a report on any of the testimony he's about to give.
He doesn't have to.
I think he does, because the courts have said you have to at least follow the spirit of the rules when it comes to evidence.
Mr. DeSano, you submitted a report-
Right.
-and he has the right to testify about the comments in your report. He doesn't have to submit a separate report relative to your report.
Well, you know my objection. I think I should-
Your objection's noted, but he doesn't have to do that.
Well, I mean, it starts with some of the simple statements. He claimed that the Dutch developed and settled New Jersey through the Dutch East Indies Company. It's actually the Dutch West Indies Company. The East Indies Company handled their settlements in Asia, east of Holland and west of Holland. So this was the Dutch West Indies. He also said it was chartered in 1638, and the Dutch West Indies Company was chartered in 1621. He also said that East Jersey was created by the Dutch, when in fact, it wasn't created until 1676 by the Quintpartite deed of 1676, when they separated New Jersey into the province of East Jersey and the province of West Jersey. Prior to that, as you know, because there's a hotel here in town named after them, Berkeley and Carteret owned all of New Jersey. There was no East or West Jersey. So those were some of the, of the issues that have jumped out at me immediately. However, they're moot, because they have nothing to do with the development of Asbury Park. It's nice history, but it, well, it's wrong history, but it's, it's, it's got nothing to do with the development of this area. At the time that Mr. Bradley acquired title to the property here in 1871, this was part of Ocean Township. At that time, Ocean Township had a governmental body, of which Mr. Bradley was not part. In 1874, the 44 inhabitants of Asbury Park were able to convince the legislature to create the borough of Asbury Park, which they did, and in that same act, they provided for a government of seven commissioners, of which James Bradley was one, and whom served as the president of that commission until 1893, when the town by referendum changed itself into a, into a city. That city was later verified by the legislature in an Act of 1897. Mr. DeSano spoke about the fact that the Asbury Park became defunct in 1879, based upon a geo-history report. I disagree with that. A careful reading of the session law, the act that created the Township Neptune, in 1879, the Township of Neptune was severed from the Township of Ocean. And so at that point, arguably, the Township of Neptune would have been in charge as far as their government was concerned. I'm not aware of the fact that Mr. Bradley was ever part of the Township of Neptune's government. However, if you read the act that creates Neptune Township, I believe it's paragraph seven, but don't quote me on that, it specifically says, "Nothing in this act will affect the body politic of Ocean Grove Asbury Park," and that they would continue on in exactly the same manner, until later on, when of course, they were turned into a city. That was 1897. So 1879 was before the Bradley deeds. However, the Act of 1879 did nothing by specific legislative decree to affect the body politic of the borough of Asbury Park. And therefore, the seven commissioners continued to operate as the, the government of Asbury That was probably the most glaring error that I found in the report. Now, as far as his assertion that Mr. Bradley was some sort of quasi-dictator, a king, I think he used the word, his references in his report to King James were from modern accounts, and those would have been the author's impression of the way that they might have viewed of Mr. Bradley. However, if we go back to the Franklin Ellis history, which was contemporary, 1885, at no point did Mr. Ellis identify Mr. Bradley as being anything more than the president of a seven-member commission. And at no time did he call him a king or any other type of ruler or unilateral force in the government. With that said, Mr. DeSano also argued that since the, that Asbury Park was defunct in 1879, which it was not, as we know, all you have to do is look at session law, then the Township of Neptune would have been the government and not Mr. Bradley. I think it's important to understand that Mr. Bradley was a businessman. He came here as a businessman, and his investment in Asbury Park was a business. Yes, he was a Methodist. Yes, he was involved with the Ocean Grove Camp Meeting Association, but his purchase of Asbury Park was done by him alone. He tried to convince the Ocean Grove Camp Meeting Association to purchase this land, and they all turned him down. These are his own words. And he said, "Fine, I'm going to go and do it myself anyway." And he bought the property personally. Now, it's important to understand, and I'm not trying to tell you the history of your city, I'm sure you know it better than anyone, but it's important to understand how land was seen at the time and the development of land at the time. Most developers in the late 19th and early 20th century were trying to make their lots look as attractive as possible. And we still do that today with, with property. But the difference is, is they had the ability and the power to turn to a piece of property and said, "I'm not going to allow to happen here what has happened where I came from," which was New York, which was an urban environment. Anybody who knows anything about the camp meeting associations, whether it be Ocean Grove or it be Mount Taber, the people from New York and Newark left the urban environment, which was, had a lot of significant problems, especially in the summer, with sanitation. They didn't have air conditioning, and came to a place that would be cooler and more healthful. And in fact, Mr. Bradley footed the bill to put in the first sewerage system in this town, because he thought it was important to be very hygienic. He understood what it was like to live in an urban environment. So it was not just him. All developers at this time, you can go to Jersey City, you can go to all different places, and they would have similar restriction, restrictive covenants in their deeds. Because why? Because they wanted to make those properties attractive to the people that they wanted to sell to. It was a business decision, because in the urban environment and other environments where these restrictions didn't exist, people were bone boiling, people were making dynamite, people were making vitriol, people were making soap and tanning hides, and having hog pens and all these other things. And in fact, one of his restrictions is no merry-go-rounds and no toboggan shoots. That was specifically put in there so that nobody would compete with his amusement interests. That was not for the benefit of the town. That was the benefit of James Bradley, because this was a real estate enterprise for him. He probably made far more money selling lots in Asbury Park than he ever did making brushes. That's how most wealthy people in the late 19th century made their money, including the Vanderbilts and, and the Rockefellers and other, other folks of that nature. Land was a great commodity. And so the actions that Mr. Bradley took as an individual entrepreneur were for the purpose of improving the value of his product, which was lots within Asbury Park. That was his purpose. It was not, I hate to say this, it was not to make Asbury Park a wonderful place and thinking about the, the concerns of the public. What he was trying to do was create the best place that he could create so he could make the most money. That's a simple fact. Mr. Bradley was a businessman.
And in your review of the title, can you confirm that there was no governmental, quasi-governmental authority assigned to Mr. Bradley?
There's nothing of record that shows that, and I show nothing, I found nothing of record that would lead me to believe that. In fact, years later, Mr. Bradley, and then later his executor and then his successor trustee, have given out deeds of release for the reverter clause that's included in many of the deeds. And basically what it says in the reverter clause, and it's important, if anyone violates any of these restrictions, Mr. Bradley gets the property back. Not the city of Asbury Park. Mr. Bradley gets the property back so that he could then sell it again. And that's how he enforced the restrictions. He didn't say you would be fined. He didn't say you would get a violation. He didn't say that you would have to come before municipal court or a hearing. He said you would lose your property. This was not unusual at that time. Reverter clauses were very usual. Today, they're no longer enforceable by the court, but at the time, they were, and so they were put in there. However, at different times, people approached Mr. Bradley and his successor, executives and trustees, to release those reverters. And in those releases, not only did he release the reverter, but he took the opportunity to throw in a couple of additional restrictions, like the toboggan shoot and the merry-go-round, because at this point, he had been involved now in amusements in the town and not just selling lots. If these had been municipal acts or public acts, then he would not have had the power to release those reverters and those restrictions unilaterally by himself. He would have had to go into town and gotten the town to pass an ordinance, or specifically a vacation of those rights by the town. None of those things exist.
Is there a reverter clause in this deed we're talking about?
There are reverter clauses in all of the original deeds from Bradley for this section, okay? And some of them were released.
So the specific 1880 deed we're talking about?
There is more than one deed.
There's more than one deed?
Yes.
There's reverter clauses in those deeds?
Yes.
And they were released subsequently?
Some of them were released on some properties.
And in your review of the title itself, is it your expert opinion that James Bradley was operating as an individual, not as a quote-unquote quasi-governmental entity?
He was operating in the same way as any other developer at the time would operate. There is no evidence that he was operating on behalf of the city of Asbury Park or borough of Asbury Park. At the time, it was the borough. And in fact, all the deeds included his wife, Helen, because the law requires that, at the time, required that the dour interest of any spouse, dour or courtesy, in this case it was dour, interest of any spouse be released when any property was sold. Even though Mr. Bradley took title to all of Asbury Park by himself, he could not sell the property without his wife signing off. This was a personal conveyance. It was not a conveyance by the municipality.
Well, when you're finished, we'll-
Sure. And in all your years of reviewing title, have you ever came across a situation where an individual who predated the incorporation of municipality had quasi-governmental authority that either superseded zoning regulations or should be considered in conjunction with the municipality's zoning regulations?
Yes, prior to 1702, the proprietors had governmental rights until Queen Anne in 1702 said, "We're ending this. We're ending East and West Jersey, we're putting them together, and we're going to install a royal government." That was the last time, 1702.
And then one last question. In regards to restrictions for zoning regulations, despite the fact that they are private in the title and therefore the sport is not of jurisdiction, the only two issues that you did see, though, were setbacks, correct, for Bond Street and Second Avenue?
The setbacks and the fence line, yes. Those are the only things that affect building.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Let me, let me ask you. So in 1880, the seven commissioners, so how was land use enacted in the city of Asbury Park at that point, at that time?
How was land use?
How were land use regulations implemented?
So by ordinance, by specific ordinance, by the, by the borough commissioners. However, there was not a lot of it.
Was there any of it? In your, in your research, was there any of it in 1880?
I have to admit, I have not looked at every ordinance from 1880 or that time period that was issued by the Asbury Park government. That was not the extent or the, what was requested of me.
So you have no knowledge of any ordinance regulating land use in 1880?
No, I don't. I did not review those.
But besides this case, you're just, in your general knowledge and research, you said you've done a lot of research?
That's correct.
Okay, and did the city of Asbury Park, to your knowledge, did they own in actual any property in, did the city, did the, I shouldn't say it's the city, it was the borough then, right? It was the borough of Asbury Park?
It was the borough, that's correct.
Did the borough of Asbury Park actually own any property in the borough of Asbury Park in 1880?
So once again, I did not, that was not part of my task. However, based upon the research that I did do in Franklin Ellis's book, he does talk about a library, he talks about schools, he talks about other public facilities, which I assume were probably conveyed to the city or some other governmental entity. I did not do an exhaustive study of all the properties owned by municipal organization at that time.
Were those facilities, do you know if they were built by Bradley, like you said the sewer was?
I know that some of them, he donated land for, the library specifically, but you know, whether he built them or not, I can't necessarily say.
So you can't show us anything where the borough of Asbury Park circa 1880 issued any land use ordinances? So we don't know if that, if they actually did that, or all they, were, were all land use enactments private in nature?
I would say that the vast majority were private in nature. The, the governments at that time were not necessarily in the, in the practice of doing that. That changed later on in the Supreme Court, called Euclid v. Ambler, in 1926.
Well, 1916 is the first zoning resolution, city of New York.
Right, so you were ahead of the time, okay? And so I was not, once again, I was not tasked to go through the municipal records. I'm sure you folks can have access to them. I, I do not.
So tell me, on the seven counselors, or the seven commissioners, what was the, how was the power structured in the borough in 1880 among the seven commissioners? You know, because there's an allegation here-
Right.
You know, because there's an allegation here that the borough was defunct in 1880 or it had no power, that the court said it had no power.
But we've proven that that's not true because, which we call it, the statute of 1879 says that it did continue to have power. As far as the cases that Mr. DeSano referenced in his report, he provides no citation for any of those cases, and we don't know, I'm sorry.
I'm agreeing with you. So I'm saying, okay, what was that, how was that power structured among the seven commissioners?
Well, it's a board of commissioners. And so, remembering that government in our country, right after 1766, 1776, was derived from the people. And in fact, those statutes refer to the inhabitants.
I'm asking you, how did they vote, the commissioners? Was it a majority? How did things get approved? Do you know?
So the statute doesn't say whether it's a majority or not, but it does say it's a board, an elected board. They had elections every year, okay? So you assume that it would be a majority vote.
You assume, but you don't know for a fact if Bradley could override or if he had more power. You don't know for a fact whether it was a majority or what was the voting structure of those commissioners.
Neither does anyone else.
Okay. I just, I want to know what we know and what we don't know.
Right.
Thank you.
Is it fair to say, though, that land use regulations of the Euclidian variety that we have now did not exist at the time and the government wasn't so much in the business of saying, "You can do this here and that there"?
I think it was, I think, first of all, I think you'd be surprised at the power that the government had and the things that they directed their intention to. If you sit down and spend some time reading the session laws, it's really pretty interesting how the state government was involved in passing a law that says you can't paint graffiti on the palisades in 1880, okay? We wouldn't even think that that was an issue, right? We see it today, but 1880, well, people are people, right? So they deal with all sorts of minutia, so we have no idea what the government may or may not have done. But that doesn't change the fact that Mr. Bradley, at no time in any of the deeds of record, did he ever allege that he was acting on behalf of the municipality or the inhabitants of the town. And instead, he assumed his role as one of a board of commissioners. I'm sure he had plenty of influence, right? He was the main landholder in the town. I understand that. But we still have a democratic system, and there was a board of commissioners name, which was elected on a yearly basis. So the legislature created the framework. Now, whether it was corrupt or not, I can't speak to that.
But you're a historian. You said, this is your background, you're a historian in New Jersey. I mean, will you not admit that William Bradley had inordinate power in the borough of Asbury Park in 1880?
Well, as the owner of all the land and therefore with the right under the law to restrict the land that he owned, sure, he had more power than anyone else to restrict land, but that doesn't mean it was a municipal act.
But do you agree that he essentially shaped the development of Asbury Park?
Oh, certainly.
And affected what happened in Asbury Park?
I would say he shaped the development. I don't know about affecting what happens, okay? I was not there.
But you've done research, but you've read papers.
That's correct.
I mean, there were, I mean, the city eventually tried to get him out, right? Because he had so much power.
And these are things that happen in all governments. I understand that. But we're talking about a specific instance here. We're talking about a specific set of restrictions, which by the way, none of which prohibit the application that's been put before you.
I agree.
And so, really, the question of whether it was a municipal act or wasn't a municipal act is really kind of moot because the restrictions don't restrict the property from being used, subdivided the way that it's being asked to be subdivided. But since that question is on the board, I have to say, there's nothing in the record that provides us with any proof that any of these restrictions were imposed as a municipal act. Thank you.
In connection with your research, in connection with your research, have you found any restrictions that would prohibit a residential use of that property?
Well, in these deeds, no. There is a restriction against manufacturing.
No, I'm talking about residential use.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So in these deeds, no. Now, in all of Asbury Park, I've not looked at every deed out of James Bradley.
I'm talking about the property in question here. We're talking about the eastern half of the property between Second and Third and just west of Bond Street.
Right. I did not find any restrictions that would prohibit residential use, no.
And in the initial submission before this board, there was a title report prepared and submitted. Did you review that?
Yes, I did.
And the, in one of the attachments, there is a deed from 1890, I think it was from Walsh to Holy Spirit Church, if I recall correctly.
That would have been 1880, and yes, James, Reverend James Walsh.
1880, yes.
Yes.
Okay. And did you see the predecessor of Walsh? Who made the deed to Walsh?
James Bradley sold the property to Reverend Walsh, and within a couple of months, he sold it to the Holy Spirit Church.
Okay.
Does the board have any other questions of the witness? Do we go to, actually, do the professionals have any questions for the witness? No?
No question.
Okay. All right. Go to the...
Open to public.
Go to public? Okay. Let's open for public questions. Actually, we usually go for questions there, but if you're more comfortable sitting here, that'd be fine. Everybody else will have to go to that microphone, please.
Mr. Gravas, I apologize for the east-west mix-up in my report. Did your attorney make you aware of when I got your report and how?
No.
Did he tell you that it was sent to me 3:30 on last Thursday?
That's not of my concern.
Okay. Maybe this is. Did he also tell you that when it was sent by Mr. Beekman, he gave me till close of business that day to write my report, which is a one hour?
Not of my concern.
Okay. Well, but do you...
I'm gonna object to that because that's not what I said.
I will absolutely put that in the record. I'll put that email in the record that you sent. I have to close of business day.
Documents.
I close of business day.
It doesn't say report.
The report would be a document.
We ask for your documents.
The report would be a document. And if someone is rushed within, say, one hour to write a report, they might mix up the words east and west Jersey. As a person, you can understand that, right?
Well, it was east and west India, not east and west Jersey.
Right. But you can understand someone making that mistake if they're asked to write a report in an hour, right?
Well, yeah, but it really has nothing to do with the issue.
Exactly.
No, I mean...
I know it doesn't. It's before James Bradley bought the property.
East India and West India Company has nothing to do with the issue.
Right. Because we're going from when James Bradley bought the property, correct?
That's the important part, right.
And that was in 1871?
That's correct.
Okay. Who was the government of this area, say, the east of the tracks in current Asbury Park? Who would have been the government in 1871?
It would have been the Township of Ocean.
And did you review the grant, the, strike that, the law, the act passed by the state of New Jersey creating the borough of Asbury Park in 17, I'm sorry, 1874?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And that particular ordinance, I'm sorry, law indicates that it is to be known as the Borough of Asbury Park Township of Ocean, correct?
Okay, yeah.
Did that special charter, it was a special charter to create Asbury Park Borough, correct?
I don't know if it says special in there. I know that it's an act creating it.
Okay. And it gave a list of powers to what it was creating, correct?
Yes, it did.
And was one of those listed powers the power to govern land use?
One of those powers was to pass an ordinance to do whatever was necessary, was ever needed, I should say.
My question was, they did list specific powers, correct?
They gave different powers, one of which was to pass an ordinance to do what it was ever needed.
But I'm gonna try a third time. Were there specific powers listed?
Mr. DeSano, why don't you show him the document so he can reference what you're referring to?
You don't have the document?
I don't have it in front of me. I did not...
And why don't we mark that into Evidence 01?
You want the entire report?
Yes.
Okay. I'll show you the Exhibit A to 01.
Do you recognize that document?
Yes, I do.
Is that the charter that the state of New Jersey granted to Asbury Park?
It was, it's an act to incorporate Asbury Park.
Right. And when they did that, were there specific powers listed?
It says that the commissioners shall share the power to appoint a police justice, determine compensation, suppress nuisances, to make and enforce all necessary sanitary regulations, to provide means for lighting the streets, for extinguishing fires. Those shall have charge and full control of all streets, parks, and other public property in the borough. They may also pass and enforce such ordinances as they may deem needful. I think those are pretty specific.
They are. I agree with you on that. Now, in those specific grants of power, did they specifically say that this new board could pass land use ordinances?
Just says ordinances.
Okay. Does it specifically say that they can, you don't want to agree to this, do you? Even though it's not in there?
I'm reading what's here in the paper.
And I'm asking you, does it say land use ordinances?
And I said it says ordinances.
Land use ordinances.
I believe he's already answered your question.
All right.
The word land is not in here.
I think they know.
You're right. The word land is not in there.
Exactly. Shouldn't take 15 minutes to get there. You had testified that I did not cite any references to any court striking down any action by Asbury Park because a specific power wasn't mentioned, correct?
I said that you, in your report, said that there were many instances where these types of ordinances were struck down, and I did not see many citations to many cases.
You said any, right?
Okay, so is there one in there?
Well, we'll get to that, but you said any.
Okay, I said it.
Yeah. You do realize that when cases go to court, an opinion is not always written and reported in the court's reporter, correct? You're aware of that?
I understand that.
Okay. And as a historian, where there are cases that are not reported, it is allowable to go to news sources at the time to see if they were reported, that they reported, that there were cases that were brought and concluded without the court issuing a written opinion. That's acceptable to a historian, correct?
No. Historians give citations for all their sources and hopefully their primary sources. That's what a good historian does.
So you're saying that if you saw newspaper accounts, that there was a case that was decided by a court, but the court didn't issue an opinion for anybody to cite in their official reporter, that as a historian, you would say, "We can't conclude that such a case ever existed because we simply can't rely upon contemporary newspaper accounts." Is that what you're saying?
So, first of all, newspapers are not historical accounts. They are usually the opinions representatives of reporters who are not trained historians. So we always have to take newspaper accounts with a grain of salt. Now, ones that are closer to the time period often get more credence. Newspaper accounts that are come from currently or 100 years later or 50 years later are usually pure conjecture or hearsay and are not considered primary source material. We also know that the late 19th century was a period of yellow journalism, whereas what we call it editors of newspapers have a significant amount of power to express their opinions regarding certain issues rather than, in fact, relaying facts. So ultimately, newspapers are not the best source for historical information.
So not the best source, that goes to the weight that you give it, not whether or not it is something to historically be considered, correct?
Did you cite a contemporary newspaper account in your report?
I cited a newspaper report from 1893.
Okay, that was some 13, 14 years after these deeds were created, okay?
Right. And so, while you may say that since there's, if there's no case law, is it your testimony today that all historians should ignore any newspaper report of cases if there was no official reporter in the court system? Is that the testimony?
I haven't read the article, as you did, from 1893, so I don't know exactly what it says, but if it said exactly what you said, that there are many cases that have been denied or struck down by the court, then I would give that practically no weight at all without doing the actual research to find out what those cases were. Because every case, as you know as a lawyer, is subject to the facts of the case. And so, they might have struck down an ordinance, but that ordinance may have been completely unreasonable and/or, hang on a second, unconstitutional, and therefore it was struck down. So, once again, I would have to see those cases.
Now, listen, you're free to monologue, but so we're clear.
You're asking me a question, I was answering.
But so we're clear. Well, I don't want the answer to be hidden.
Mr. DeSano.
You don't get to tell me how long I'm gonna talk.
You get the right to ask a question. Mr. Gravas has the right to answer. If you don't like the answer, that's too bad.
Okay, I'm trying to find the answer.
Ask the question. You're trying to find the answer that you want.
No, I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find the answer so it's clear, okay? The newspaper reports, first of all, I want to get on the record, do you concede? Yes, no? Do you concede that when a court makes a ruling in a case, there is not always a reported decision of the case?
From a case that long ago, it's possible that it would be extremely difficult to find, yes.
Well, it's true even today that courts give rulings and there is not a written opinion on that case.
I think the board can take judicial notice that Mr. DeSano was correct.
Okay.
Move on.
Thank you. Okay. That being the case, what you said about newspaper accounts contemporaneous with the times just went to the weight you should give it, not that they're completely to be dismissed as a historian, right?
I'd have to see the cases.
Okay, well, if there are no cases...
In 1893, they would have been available to anyone writing that paper.
If, but if there's no decision from the court, they're not available ever, right? There's no written opinion, so there'd be no citation.
Well, we don't know that. We don't know if there was no written, you're assuming that, that's conjecture.
Well, we'll get to that when I testify. The, you said you did not review the article, but you said you reviewed my report and it was appended to my report, and...
No, I said I disagree with your report.
You said you weren't familiar with the article. And the article says, "The powers conferred by the original law were very meager, and the town has been beaten in court very frequently because the ordinance under which prosecutions were brought were defective." So you read that part, at least in my report, correct?
I did, and that sounds like an opinion to me, number one. Number two, once again, we don't know what those cases were. They could have been ordinances about walking your dog.
Are you familiar with Guerin versus Borough of Asbury Park, 30A, 472, 1894?
No, I'm not.
So if that was the case, that didn't allow Asbury Park to even issue a license for a business because it's not in the charter, you wouldn't know whether I'm correct or incorrect because you're unfamiliar with it, right?
That's right. I did not read that case.
So if you had testified I gave no cases before, that would have been incorrect testimony?
I, correct my testimony, say you gave one case. So like east and west, I changed my report to say, my testimony to say one case.
The Asbury Park Borough was reincorporated after 1874, correct?
In 1893, it was reincorporated by referendum. That means the people in the town... In 1893, it was reincorporated by referendum, that means the people in the town changed it, not the legislature.
Right, and you know why that was done?
I assumed the people wanted to change.
Just your assumption, that's the only.
That's why I said assume.
Okay, was there any legislation passed between 1874 and 1893 having to do with boroughs?
All boroughs in the state, that was not tasked by me in my report, so I, I can't speak to that.
So, are, are you unfamiliar with the Borough Act of 1878?
I am familiar with it, yes.
And when, when Asbury Park was reincorporated, wasn't it to be in compliance with the Borough Act of 1878?
Once again, I was not here in 1893, nor did I read the referendum, so I have no idea, as I previously testified, why they did that in 1893. I assumed they wanted to change.
In Neptune Township was, was incorporated by New Jersey in, what was it, what year was that?
1879.
1879, and would Asbury Park have then been a borough within the borders of the township of Neptune?
According to the Act, it said that this Act would, when it described the boundaries of, of Neptune, it included Asbury Park and Ocean Grove, however, in the Act, it specifically stated that this would in no way interfere with the body politic of Ocean Grove and Asbury Park.
But, boroughs govern themselves, right, even though they're connected to a larger township?
That's the idea.
And so, and isn't that what the State of New Jersey meant by that?
Yeah, they said leave it alone.
So.
So, it was not defunct.
The, well, the original, the original 1874 Act put Asbury Park under the auspices of the Township of Ocean, right?
No, no, it created a new borough.
Within Ocean Township?
Within Ocean Township.
That's why it was called Asbury Park of Ocean Township.
That could have been a location, that doesn't necessarily mean that it was invested with municipal or governmental powers, in fact, the Act specifically invested the commissioners of Asbury Park with governmental powers.
That was in 1874?
That was in 1874.
What I'm trying to determine is what happened when they moved Asbury from Ocean to Neptune? Don't you agree that James Bradley?
What happened was nothing, because in the Act, creating Neptune, it specifically says, "Nothing will happen to Ocean Grove or Neptune, or Asbury Park's body politic." I don't have it in front of me, if I had it, I could read it for you.
When James, when James Bradley, in 1880, when he listed Second and Bond Street in these deeds, did he say it was from the Township of Neptune?
You mean when he gave a location in the description?
Yes.
Yeah, some of them said Asbury Park and, and Neptune Township.
And Neptune Township, right, and prior to that, between 1879 and, and 1880, had there ever been a grant of powers from the legislature to a new borough in Asbury Park as part of Neptune Township?
Didn't have to, the Act of 1879 said that nothing would change.
Well, it did change, the very location of Asbury Park changed from.
No, it was right here, it's always been here, it didn't move anywhere.
The designation of Asbury Park changed from a borough, Asbury Park a borough within the Township of Ocean to Asbury Park a borough within the Township of Neptune.
Okay.
And wouldn't that be why the project that I cited found that that made the, the Asbury Park 74 Charter defunct?
First of all, I don't know who did that study, I have no idea whether they had any legal acumen or experience in interpreting the law, or if they took someone else's word for it. The, the, the paperwork that you provided has a, an attachment that would be linked to that particular statement, and that, that was not available for me to look at, so I don't know why that particular group, the geohistory people, some 100 years later, decided that they thought it would be defunct, but the Act, the session law, is very clear, nothing should affect, nothing herein should affect the body politic of Asbury, of Ocean Grove and Asbury Park.
What year was the Asbury Park Library constructed?
I, I don't, I didn't write that.
Well, if it was 1881, it would have been after these deeds were written, correct?
Okay, I don't know what the date is.
But if that's true.
I don't know what that's got to do with any of this, but.
Well, you testified to Mr. Shana Mayo's question that, that City of Asbury Park owned property, and you mentioned the library.
Mr. DeSano, the library, was it on this property?
What's that?
Was the library on this property?
No, the library was used.
And what's the relevance?
He, we used it as an example himself.
We're talking about this property, what's the relevance?
The relevance is, he used it in response to Mr. Shana Mayo's question, that there was property owned by the city, I'm trying to find out if he knows that he's wrong.
Okay, what's the relevance to this property?
The, the relevance is whether, in response to Mr. Shana Mayo's question, whether or not the city owned other properties in town.
And I think he answered that question to Mr. Shana Mayo's question.
Yeah, he said the library.
Madam Chair, if we may, I think we need to move on.
He said the library.
There's no relevancy to the library or other public properties to this specific property.
Then why did he testify to it?
There was a question, he answered it.
And I get to cross on that question.
You don't get to answer it, ask it again.
And I get to cross on it.
Can we please move on to relevant?
Yes.
Testimony, please.
What year was the sewer plant, I'm sorry, the sewer system developed within Asbury Park?
There's a map filed, I'm trying to remember, it may have been 1881, I, I don't have it in front of me.
I mean, though, though I understand that you did testify to that, once again, relevance to the sewer plant versus this particular property.
The relevance is the whether or not James Bradley controlled Asbury Park or a Board of Commissioners did.
And I believe he's already testified to that.
Yes, I think he testified to that a number of times.
Correct.
And I'm cross-examining about that testimony, he didn't even give me one question on this yet.
We're looking for relevance here, we're looking for relevance, please.
Okay, well, the proffer was that the fact that James Bradley built a sewer system somehow meant that it was a private enterprise, I get to, I get to ask him questions about whether or not that holds up.
The citation.
That's all I'm asking to do, there's no pending question.
The citation for the private enterprise is from Franklin Ellis, who was there in 1885. What he talked about was the sewers that were placed in the roads, which there is a filed map of, the roads were owned by Mr. Bradley.
And, and would.
Not by the township.
And, and could you tell me, under what rubric of laws at the time, a private individual would be allowed to construct a sewer system when there's a government in place?
Because he owns the roads.
So, so it was just because he owned all the property?
He owned the roads, so he's able to do what he wants with the roads.
And he owned all the property too, right?
That's correct.
I have nothing further.
Okay, any, any other questions from anyone else from the public? Please come up to the microphone.
Do we have to take a motion?
For a public.
My name's Gary Bickham.
Oh, yeah, right, 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 sorry.
My name's Gary Bickham. Now, he was speaking about the title and the deed restrictions on a deed from 1880, is that what you said, about someone named Walsh?
Actually, well, that was one of the deeds, there are numerous deeds, I think there's about seven or eight of them.
Well, I have a deed here from 1882 where Bradley actually sells lots 790, 791, 792, and 793, which the church actually sits on.
Really? This is testimony.
Yeah, is this a question or is this testimony?
Well, this is, both.
It's a question.
The question I'm asking him, because he's, he says that he's got all these deeds, but he, they actually sell the church to Adelie Cole and her husband from Neptune, from the Borough of Asbury, and this is dated January of 1882, and I've got another deed where Adelie Cole.
But what's the question?
This, I'm gonna get to that.
What's the question to this gentleman?
My question is, all these deeds he looked at with these restrictions, this deed here has the restrictions, did you see this deed from 1882 selling it to Adelie Cole?
I saw the Adelie Cole deeds, the property, that the actual structure of the church sits on was never in Adelie Cole. I think you have to check, check her description.
So, 791, 792, and 793, the church doesn't sit on those three property lots?
So, what happened is, is that the Bradley didn't sell the property based upon the lots, he, he sold it based upon subdivisions of the lots, and so, in some cases, it was the rear 40 feet or the front 50 feet of 791, 79, and those sort of things, so you have to look at the description itself, sir.
Description itself is absolutely perfect on here, it says exactly from Bond Street, it gives exact markers, it shows exactly where it is, and if you look at the lots on the script, on your screen, it'll show 791.
For the record, if you can, can you reference the book and page of the deed you're referencing?
Yes, I can, it's.
Is that my report?
It's block.
No, it should say DB and a number, usually it's three digits?
345.
Okay, and a, and a page number?
Uh, one second here, that's, DB 345, I don't have the page number, I'm sorry.
196.
196.
Give, if you can give Mr. Gravas a minute to.
Sure.
Look for that deed.
Right, it's a 50 by 150-foot lot, which is part of lots 791, 792, and 793.
Now, this is all three lots, it's actually stated that all three lots are being sold to her.
That's actually not correct.
Okay, then why does it say, "All three lots are in here being sold to her," then another deed in 1929, another deed.
If it's right here, I'll read it to you.
Okay, another deed in 1929 sells it back to the Holy Spirit Church, which I also have the deed of. And that has the exact restrictions on what it can have on those church, on those lots.
So, it says, "Beginning, beginning at a point in the nor, northerly line of Second Avenue, distant 150 feet westerly from a stone planted in the northwest corner of Second and Bond Street," so that's 150 feet away from the corner, and it starts there, and then it goes by another 50 feet, over 150 feet back, this is not where the church sits.
On Bond Street, it doesn't sit on Bond Street?
It doesn't sit on Bond Street, that's not what that description says.
The church does sit on Bond Street.
That's, that's.
That description does not sit on Bond Street, that description fronts on Second Avenue. You don't know how to read descriptions, sir.
Yeah, and this, and this.
I understand that, but it's on the corner.
And this definitely references lots 791, lots 792, and lots 793.
No, I'm sorry, please, please, there's only, there are only two people that can talk here, a gentleman there.
Okay, what they're, what they're referencing here, on what he's speaking about, is the actual plant of where the marker is, where the marker starts, and that's what he's speaking about, it's 150 feet from Bond Street is where the marker starts at, so they can get the 25 feet off, because there's several restrictions that's mentioned in here for those lots. 25 feet fast, you can't have a side air.
Back to testimony.
Well, well, this, I'm just reading what this says, he's making a testimony as well, and that says.
Yeah, but you, but you, you, you're, you're, you're supposed to be asking questions, not testify.
Okay, so, my question is, so you're saying that this deed is not about 791, 792, and 793, and that your testimony, it goes off another thing, that he never sold it to Adelie Cole, and Adelie Cole never sold it back to Holy Spirit Church in 1929, which I also have the deed for, which also references 791, 792, and 793, which the church sits on.
Once again, it's part of 791, 792, and 793, it is not where the physical church sits, and, most importantly, are there restrictions in that deed?
Absolutely, several.
No, that prohibit residential use?
Yes.
What?
Says that. You can't have any residential use within 25 feet of Bond Street, with, going in within 25 feet of Bond Street.
No, 25 feet is set down.
Of the, of the marker, which the marker is on here, so it says, "That marker, you can't, you gotta be 25 feet in from," which they've done, but the question is, where's the marker?
Right, not from Bond Street, from Second Avenue, 25 feet, I've already testified that that restriction exists, but, so what is your point?
My point is, have you gone off this at all, have you looked at this and gone off this, have these restrictions?
That, that is in my report.
So, you know these restrictions?
I know those restrictions, they're in my report.
Next, public.
Hi, Rita Moran of Eighth Avenue. I couldn't hear him too well, I'm a little hard of hearing, but I, could he repeat what the deed restriction is?
So, there's several versions of the restrictions that appear in different deeds, it's not identical, but they're virtually the same. However, what I did was I summarized all the restrictions that affect the property, and I'll read them to you. The first, 25-foot building setback line from Second and Third Avenue, 15-foot building setback from Bond Street, no fences higher than four feet higher, closer than 25 feet from Second or Third Avenue, in other words, the fence in front of your house, if you want it to be closer to the road, it's gotta be four feet, you want it to be five feet, it's gotta be 25 feet back from the road, all right? No more than one house or cottage per lot, that is expired, that was only good for five years, says it right in the deed, no hogpens, no public laundries, no public stables, no butcher shops, no barter shops, no fish markets, no meat markets, no public gas works, no livery stable, no slaughterhouse, no toboggan chute, no merry-go-round, no dangerous, noxious, unwholesome, or offensive establishment, business, trade, or calling, no sale of intoxicated liquors, and no manufacturing of any type. Those are all of the restrictions that exist in all those deeds, none of them say no residential use, it doesn't appear anywhere in these deeds.
Well, I had the opportunity to go out to Freehold, we were researching something else, and we came across Asbury Park, Ocean Avenue, and in that deed restriction, it says it can never, ever be changed, and those were the exact words.
Okay, what.
So, what does it say in that one?
What can never ever be changed, ma'am, what, what can never ever be changed?
Does it say that in that restriction? It said forever.
Restrictions are, what, what, they're what they call run with the land, they're a pertinent, so they run with the land, so they do last for a long time, however, the Supreme Court has ruled, in the case of Davidson Brothers v. DeCatsen's son, that if restrictions are unreasonable, that they cannot be enforceable, that's a whole different road, so ultimately, they're not necessarily good forever, however, those restrictions in Ocean Avenue could be completely different than these restrictions, have nothing to do with this property, because this property is on Ocean Avenue.
Well, they're one of Bradley's, they, there are Bradley restrictions, and there are heirs to Bradley.
Objection, what's the relevance, it's not the subject property that's before this board.
We, we need to, we need to stick to this property and any restriction that you've seen, that, that we see for this property, not everything that Bradley ever had, this property.
But whenever he gifted something, it was forever, because he gifted it, he didn't get paid.
Okay, and how do you know?
So, that, that word is always there.
How do you know he gifted it?
Well, look, Ocean Grove is still dry, isn't it? You talked about Ocean Grove.
I'm asking you, how do you know he gifted it?
Huh? That's a restriction.
Well, she's making allegations, I'm trying to, okay.
Do you have any other questions, Rita?
Uh, no, I, no, that's it.
Okay, next.
Good evening, Louise Murray, Grand Avenue, Asbury Park, Mr. Gravas, you mentioned, I don't know, I'm not talking about the property, I'm talking about something.
Louise, please speak up, it's a mic.
You can't hear me?
No.
Okay, Louise Murray, Grand Avenue, I got it, you mentioned that you had a surveying business, but you're not a surveyor, right?
That's great, I, I own a surveying company and hired surveyors.
Okay.
To work for me.
Could you tell me what the name of your business was and where you were located?
It was called Precision Surveying Technology, and we were located in Edison and South Plainfield, New Jersey.
Edison, okay, how long ago?
I operated that business from 2000 to 2010.
Okay, but you, you yourself, of course, couldn't do the surveying work.
I went out and did all the same survey work as a surveyor could do, I mean, I did not, because I made it my business to learn, but I did not, I could not, of course, certify surveys.
Right.
But I ran the, I ran the equipment, I walked through the fields, I found monuments, I did everything else that a surveyor could do.
Okay, and did you use one, any specific title company when you had to certify these surveys?
I, I, well, first of all, I owned the title company, actually the title agency at that time, but our company also did work for other title agencies and companies. but our company also did work for other title agencies and companies.
Which one? I'm sorry. Other, other, other title agencies. And what was the name of your title company?
You know, my title company was Investors Title Agency, Provident Title Agency, uh, Supreme and Supreme Title Agency.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I was just curious.
Okay.
Any other questions from the public?
Can I ask one question?
Hmm?
Joe Grabas. Yes, I, I just wanted to ask Mr. Grabas.
And your name, please, for the record.
My name is Anthony Silva, and, um, I went to school at Holy Spirit a long time ago, and I... Yes?
Speak into the mic, please.
Thank you.
Okay, is that better?
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to ask you, um, you're basically saying that you know Ja, uh, James Bradley quite well, um, and...
I never said that, sir.
Well, historically, let's say. Uh, but the fact of the matter is, he was a politician. And if you go back to 1880, and you understand that a lot of people came here from Europe, if you've ever been to Europe, you would know, if you go to any of the cities there, they have a church, they have a butcher, a baker, a candlestick maker, all those things. They're there to attract people to live in that town and pay taxes. So if he's just a really bad guy and just wants to make money, and that's all he wants, why wouldn't he do that?
Because he wants to make the most money that he can.
Oh, okay, so he has to be an SOB doing it. I mean, why can't he be a nice guy while he's doing it? And go ahead and build a beautiful church that these people bought the land for, which he made money on, and they put this gorgeous church, which, by the way, is the finest church, practically, one of the finest churches on the entire eastern seaboard.
Sorry, sir. What is, what is your question of this gentleman?
My question basically is, his pretense is, that Mr. Bradley just came up with these restrictions because he wanted to control the property. That's it. And my, my answer to him is, if you understand the time that that church was built, people did not live the way we do now. New Jersey's just become a bedroom community, and New York City basically is, you know, they just pave over their history with glass, steel, and concrete. This is what's happening here. You're getting rid of something that is more than...
You will have, you will have an opportunity to make comments at the end of this.
You're getting rid of something way more than just a building.
This is, next.
And something unique to this town that makes this town special, and...
You will all have time to make your comments at the end of this, before there's deliberation. Just so we're clear. Anyone else have questions?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Muma. I just have a question that kind of relates to Rita's question. She just said to you that this property was gifted by Bradley, and she said that was important. And then I think you said something, you, you responded back to that, like, how, like, do you...
I said, "How do you know that?"
Okay. And I found a, a report from the department, the DEP's Historic Preservation Office, that indicates that it was gifted. It says that it was donated by the city founder, and I wondered if the land is...
Objection. What's the relevance to the subject property that's before this planning board here tonight?
I'm hoping that Ms. Muma will get to that.
I wondered if, if there is a distinction between a donation and a sale, and can you explain that for us, please?
Sure. So, at the time, there were two ways to prepare a deed. One way was to actually show the consideration, in other words, how much you paid. And if you look at some of these deeds, the, uh, the Holy Spirit Church did in fact pay a certain amount of money for the different lots, okay? There's also something called a $1 deed, okay, that says $1 and other good and valuable considerations. That was not unusual for the time, because they can't do it anymore. It's against the law. You have to provide the consideration, but back then, quite often, you would see $1 and other good and valuable considerations, because they didn't want to tell people how much they paid. The fact that it says $1 does not mean that it was donated. Usually, when you see a deed for a church, a church property, that's donated, it specifically says that it's donated, that it's a gift, and that, or quite often, there's a reverter that says, "If this property ever stops being used as a church, it reverts back to me." That language does not appear in any of these deeds. So I don't know. He might have given it to them, but there's no proof that he did give it to them other than a statement that you read in that report, which someone who was unknowledgeable about land title documents might have perceived that because it said $1, that it was a gift. That doesn't automatically mean that it's a gift. Quite often, more deeds than not said $1 and other good and valuable consideration, but later on, after the Spanish-American War, when they reinstituted the, uh, the stamp tax, you could go to the back of the document, and it would show you the tax that was paid, and you could calculate exactly how much the people paid. At the time these deeds were made, the stamp, uh, tax was not in effect. It was established during the Civil War. It went away, and then it was brought back in the Spanish-American War, so it kind of skipped the Spanish-American War, 1787.
We don't have those records from Civil War to Spanish-American War.
Right. So we don't know whether or not they paid any money for the property.
Okay, and if it's listed as donated, it means that someone at the Historical Preservation Office of DEP was just making their best educated guess, or...
Right, because they're not familiar with land title documents. It's a very specific area of, uh, a, a very specific discipline within, within the law. And, uh, and when you look at a million of these documents, as I have over the course of my career, I get to see this stuff, and I wrote an entire chapter in my book, Owning New Jersey, about it.
Thank you.
It wouldn't make a difference, right?
Anyone else? I'm sorry, one, no, I'm sorry, one time. One time through. Who else? That's okay, hang on, hang on. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else that has a question before we go for round two, for this gentleman? Anyone else? No one else? Okay, go forward. I'll make, I'll make this one exception. Usually doesn't happen.
You read the, uh, deed with the sale from Bradley to Adelaide, right?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, you saw that that was for no money, correct? That, that was...
I don't have it in front of me, but it might have said $1.
But the, but if they broke any of the deed restrictions, it reverted back to Bradley?
Yes, that, that, that was it.
That the property reverts back to Bradley, and then when Adelaide sold it to Holy Spirit in 1929, she put, she sold it for a dollar, and if any of the restrictions were broke, the same restrictions were put in place that Bradley put in place, and if those restrictions were broke, it still stayed in place and reverted back to Bradley. Is that correct?
That's how reverters work, yes. Absolutely.
Okay, can I get a motion to close public?
I have a further question, based on the question that was posed a little while ago.
Okay.
In deed book 345, page 196, you have that deed?
345, which one?
3, 345, page 196.
196, yes.
You have that deed?
I don't have the deed in front of me. No, I don't. I don't know if you have it here. Did I send you a copy of it? Hang on a second. Hang on. I believe I, I believe it is here. Hang on. Let me find it. 196.
Let me pose my question here. I'm not, I'm not seeing it here. This, I think, was part of their search, not mine. I don't know, like, did I send you copies of all of mine? It's probably in the back here.
Would it be better for us just to ask the questions, see maybe...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And a question that was asked to you, or posed to you, a representation was made that in that deed, there was a restriction that prohibited the, uh, the use of that property for residential purposes.
No, nobody said that.
That, that was a representation that was made in that question to you. Okay. I, no, I don't. That answered the question. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
May I redirect?
You go.
Thank you so much. Joe, did you have an opportunity to read the deed book that's been referenced by the objector?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And then regarding the, in regarding the description, is that description the subject property that's before this board here tonight?
It's a portion of the subject property, yes.
And does it include the portion of the church?
The church does not sit on that particular section, no.
And in your review of the title, is the only restriction that's remained to this application related to setbacks?
That's it, setbacks.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Okay. All right, I'd like to take a, a five-minute break, and after that break, when we come back, come the comment portion. Everyone has three minutes.
We didn't close the public, did we?
We moved the clock.
We never closed.
All right, motion to clo, close public comment?
So move.
I mean...
Questions.
Public questions, please?
So move. Second.
Okay. When you come back, we're gonna have three minutes for people to be able to make comments, and you please line up one time around, and, um, please, let's make it five minutes, truly five minutes, okay? Because we have, uh, I'm sure that we have a number of comments, based on the amount of people that are here. Thank you. Make a motion to, I mean, a motion to adjourn for five minutes.
So move.
Okay, I got it. All right, let's get the meeting back to order. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So move, so move. Second.
Okay. Mr. Beekman, roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
If they're not here, they don't get a vote. Okay, let's move forward. Mr. Beekman, you'd mentioned that there was, uh, something else.
Yes, the senator was gonna come up to the microphone, um, a little bit of change of plan.
Okay. Do we have, um, do we have to do, do we need to do a roll call, or are we all in favor is enough?
No, I don't, we don't do a roll call. So, so in essence, what Mr. DeSano had asked was to have a, um, the ability to submit an objector's case, but they'll explain what his approach is.
Yes, understanding of the lateness of the hour and that everybody is volunteers, I've offered to, um, just submit my report into evidence, subject to any of you having any questions for me, but without testifying. That way, we can, uh, lop off a, a great amount of time. So I understand Mr. Pasada doesn't object to moving that into evidence, and if any of you have any questions of me, that's fine.
I mean, I, I do have a, a question for you. What I wanted to find out is that, is there anything in your report around, regarding these deeds that prohibits the building of single-family homes?
I, I did not present myself, as you see from the report, as an expert in the title, only on whether or not Mr. Bradley was acting as government at the time, because that was put into issue, uh, by Mr. Beekman, on whether or not he was public or private when he did it. But I'm leaving them to their proofs on the deed itself, because I, I'm not offering any testimony in that regard.
Okay. So I would also assume that if I asked you if there are anything that prohibits the compliance of the bulk standards that Asbury Park today has in these deeds, your answer would be...
I didn't look.
Okay. Okay. All right, let's move forward. Thank you. Anybody else have any, uh, anything else on the board here? No? Okay. All right, let's, uh, get a motion to open public comment.
So move. Second.
And now we have, everyone has three minutes to, um, to make their, their comments. Now, once again, these are not questions. These are comments, your feelings, whatever, whatever you'd like. Three minutes, and they will be timed, and...
What, is there gonna be a closing argument by the, by the, in the objector? Objector always has the right to a final closing argument.
Yeah, I mean, after, after, after all the comments, if, is that what it is, Mr. Beekman?
So the, so the objector would have the right to make its, his own closing argument.
Okay, after all the comments.
Once that's closed, we will close the public.
Okay.
And then the applicant will have a right to make his own summation.
Okay, that's fine. That works.
Uh, just for the record, all in favor of opening to public comment?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Please, everyone, please line up that wants to make any public comment, so we can, we can keep moving forward. Thank you. All right, and you'll be asked up for your name and address. Please. Kaye Har...
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to be, about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Kaye Harris. K.A.Y.H.A.R.R.I.S., Cornell Avenue, Neptune. Uh, the president of the Asbury Park Historical Society, Asbury Park business owner, and native of Asbury Park. I apologize, I live in Neptune.
Are you ready?
Okay.
Okay. The Asbury Park Historical Society was very relieved after hearing earlier this year that Elizabeth Spira, the agent with O'Brien Realty who listed Holy Spirit Church property, expressed that she was a true historian. Ms. Spira further elaborated that they listed the property knowing it would not be torn down. They, JLD developers, are true historians. After a series of back-and-forth interactions with the city and planning board, the developers' original design plans changed, with their latest outcome being, "It's a lovely church, but not worth preserving." The Asbury Park Historical Society, along with many in our community, wholeheartedly believe that the Holy Spirit Church building is worth preserving. Although the current path was to explore the validity of a deed by James Bradley, which appears to restrict the use of the property, um, to only as a church, my position as the president of the Asbury Park Historical Society is that developers who truly have an interest in preserving history can find a way of respecting our historical structures, while at the same time achieving their financial goals as a developer. Although the church was founded in 1879, the ground was broken for the construction of Holy Spirit's current granite building structure trimmed in limestone in December 1909. If the planning board finds that they do not have grounds to deny you, the developers, the right to tear down the Holy Spirit edifice, how about just doing the right thing to honor the spirit of the original deed transaction by James Bradley? How about considering a completely different property in Asbury Park to develop and allow another church group to acquire the building as is? Or how about going back to the drawing board to reconsider your vision while preserving the building? Finally, to the public, above and beyond the Holy Spirit Church, we, the Asbury Park Historical Society, are very concerned about the potential of losing the next church building, the convention hall, post office, bank building, et cetera. As of next month, the Historical Society is inviting its members to attend our monthly meetings once again. We welcome members who are willing to work with us to pursue initiatives for preserving what is left of our important structures built a century or more ago.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you can state your name and spell it for the record, please?
It's Robyn Smith. R.O.B.Y.N. Smith. S.M.I.T.H. Yellowstone Lane in Howell. Uh, good evening. My name is Dr. Robyn Smith. I'm a local veterinarian.
Hold on a second. One sec. I gotta get your time started. I'm a beginner at this. This is not my normal job, so, um, okay.
So I'm a local veterinarian in the area. I do consulting work here in Asbury Park every single day. Um, and I just wanted to thank the board for your time tonight and for considering, um, our statements, taking them into consideration, and thank you for the work and the service that you do for this community. Um, my mom was born on Sunset Ave, so I'm definitely an Asbury Park baby. Uh, this city is, really means a lot to us, and I think we're all here for the same reason, because we want to do, we love this city, and we want to do what's best for Asbury Park. Um, I just wanted to speak tonight specifically on the historic significance of this building. Um, I, I went over... I, I went over the testimony of the historical architect of J.L.D. Investments, and I believe that the church's significance was downplayed. He mentions small seaside church. Asbury Park's significance in the 1880s and through the 20th century was tremendous. The infrastructure is actually, was in the hands of these big-time New York architects who designed some of the largest cathedrals in the entire world. So this is a unique, one-of-a-kind building. I also have been, there was a, I've been in contact with the associate curator for the Monmouth County Historical Association, Mr. Joe Zemla, and he asked that I, you know, mention his findings tonight, and he also would love to discuss these things further.
You can discuss someone else's findings.
I understand that. There is a newspaper article from 1930 specifically about this building and its historical significance. The cathedral-like church, one of the finest in the diocese of Trenton, together with the parochial school, stand as monuments for the long and arduous service covering a period of 37 years, the pastorate of this venerable, venerable domestic prelate. So there was just a newspaper article, it was kinda interesting. Also, the historic architect said that this church is not mentioned in the New Jersey Historic Site Registry. That is disingenuous. Perhaps it was an honest mistake or an oversight. This church is actually part of the Liberty Square Historic District, which specifically notes portions of First, Second, and Third Avenues. Oftentimes, a specific building is not mentioned. If that district in and of itself is historic, the building is included. So multiple structures throughout this area are deemed historically significant in those, on the New Jersey Historic Site. Again, it's called the Liberty Square Historic District. And I also wanted to just mention to the board that you recently ruled June 8th on a Second Avenue that it cannot be subdivided, and the reason is because of the city's 2017 master plan reexamination, that you are discouraging the subdivision of historic buildings in our city. You are maintaining the restoration and protection of historically notable buildings. Thank you.
Good evening, Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue.
Ms. Lamberton, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I truly appreciate what Ms. Harris and Dr. Smith just said about the historical significance and about what that building means to our city. I think the title expert, I'm sorry, I forget your name, he downplayed James Bradley's attitude about Asbury Park. He was a little king. I don't have your credentials for titling or that kind of work. What I bring to Asbury Park is 20 years of immersion in this city and learning as much about the history as I possibly could, specifically about zoning in the city. I sat on the zoning board for seven years. Specifically about the government in Asbury Park. I chaired the Charter Study Commission. This, this city has a significance all its own. And James Bradley was a huge part of that development, and he, he had his thumb on everything that went on in this city. And there's no question in my mind that at some point in time, he didn't say, "That corner right there, a church," and put his thumb on it. And as Rita has suggested, put some, some kind of restriction on it. And in fact, the fact that you brought up so many of the reverters clauses is proof that he controlled this city. He, he said, "Yeah, okay, I'm gonna sell you a lot, but you break my rules, I get the lot back." So I, I just want to impress upon the board, this, this piece of property with this gorgeous church on it is worth saving for the city. We have lost so much of our history already. The historical architect's report, the final sentence of his report was something to the effect, "Sometimes you have to tear down in order to move forward." In Asbury Park, we have torn down so much. We all, we recognize the Mayfair Theater, we recognize the Charms Building, we recognize all the other movie theaters, like, what's the name of the game? We can't, we just, we just can't lose anymore. I encourage you to vote this down. Let the developers sue us.
Hi, my name is Joan, my name is Joan Schuler, S.C.H.U.L.E.R. And I was told this week that there was a bid.
Ms. Schuler, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I was, I was told this week that a bid had been put on to purchase Holy Spirit Church, and it was denied. And I would love to see that revisited, because I would hate, I was a member of Holy Spirit Church for many years, and it's such a magnificent, beautiful building. And I just don't wanna see it demolished. And I hope that it can be saved. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Irene Bernie, Sunset Avenue, and I swear to tell the truth. I just wanna concur with everybody, and I thank you. But we worried so much about Tilly and all these other stupid things, but this is really something worth preserving. And please, please reconsider it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name, could you just?
E-Y.
An E-Y? Thank you.
Rita, you wanna go up? Louise Desposito Murray. Desposito, some people would say. Born and raised in Asbury Park, and still here.
Just one second, we have to get you sworn in.
I swear.
Just a second.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, start all over. Louise Desposito Murray, born and raised in Asbury Park, I'm still here. I belong to Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church. But I went to the school over there on Bangs Avenue, which is now a Christian school of some sort. But that's where I got my education, and that's where I got my religion. And then we built Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church on Asbury Avenue, and the cornerstone is 1950. I, I have to say, I've only been in Holy Spirit twice. My sister-in-law and my brother's marriage, and a recent death, okay? I cannot believe, for the life of me, that you would even entertain the thought of taking that church down. I mean, it's, it's appalling. And I spoke to someone at the fair at Mount Carmel the other day, on Sunday, Saturday afternoon, who happens to be on the finance board. I'm not gonna say his name, but it doesn't make a difference. And I told him, I said, "Are you aware of what's going on over there?" I said, "'Cause I've been to a few planning board meetings." And he said, "Oh, we're supposed to make condos inside the church." I mean, he's oblivious to all of this. Somebody's gotta sit down and talk to each other, because they think the church is gonna remain. I said, "Oh, no." I said, "That's not the plan." I said, "You better get together and figure it out." Well, I'll have to talk to Father McGill. I don't know if they know what's going on, if the right hand knows what the left hand's doing, but somebody's gotta get together and straighten this out. I don't even know how you came up with a plan of six houses. I mean, when you did the research, I mean, my husband was in the surveying business. When you did the research, did you not, did you not come across the deeds? I mean, you can't do a subdivision just by laying it out and saying, "Oh, here or there." I mean, you had to research your deeds. So somebody is not coming up with all the facts. Obviously, McGill doesn't know all the facts. So I, I don't wanna lay my head on a pillow at night if I have anything to do with, "Oh, okay, just take it down." It's a disgrace. And at least I can go by Bangs Avenue and say, "I remember when I went to school there, and I went to church here. In fact, I played the organ in that church." Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Just a second. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Jessica, J.E.S.S.I.C.A. Rojas, R.O.J.A.S.
And where do you live, Ms. Rojas?
Second Avenue, Asbury Park.
Thank you.
I wanted, I'm here just because I feel like this is like an opportunity to speak for my peers as well. My experience in Holy Spirit Church, I will see as a tragedy, as we can all agree here that this is the valley of Asbury Park. I seen Asbury Park at its lowest point, and now it's rising power, as you can say. It's getting beautiful, and I appreciate that. However, I started as a volunteer. I went to Reven Catholic, grew up and, living in Asbury Park. I started with Father Bill, he was our pastor. We started the after-school program, started doing that. That was the purpose of the after-school program, was to just to help the people, the kids in the community with their after-school, helping them with reading, English, writing. After that, we have created, our plan was to get the young adults involved, teaching their responsibility. That was one part of what Father Bill, what was his purpose. Also, I was an altar server there. We also created the summer camp, and I was co-director of running the summer camp. Having, we, I seen the Holy Spirit basement, some of you all know. They remodeled that, and I see very familiar faces who I'm very happy to see. I would hate to tear it down, to go away. I think that Asbury Park, as we can see beautiful pictures of our town, and Asbury Park Holy Spirit Church is definitely one of like, one of the beautiful, best. If you ever been there, if you had a chance to, just a very beautiful church. I think it's part of a cathedral. It speaks, it's Asbury Park. Like, I will hate to see it go down. It's a beautiful structure, beautiful building. And I will have to say, if you would like to, I understand his business, but if you want to go ahead and do super condos that none of us in Asbury Park can afford, please go do it somewhere else. Not in our church. This is my church. This is our community's church. And I feel like, I feel like as our peers, we have our, I cannot, I still, I am still grieving the fact that we had to close our church down. So please, I cannot just, I did not just come here. I'm, I'm here actually for a reason. I'm trying to have a second opportunity. I came to put up a fight, because, like I said, I live on Second Avenue, and I can see, I pass by it all the time. And it would be a shame that it just goes to waste, and just for something else, to have it open to the public. Every Christmas, Thanksgiving, Father Bill was there helping the community. It brought Haitian community, American community, Hispanic community. This was, that was his plan, to bring Asbury Park. And I am so proud to be, to live in Asbury Park, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
It wasn't me, that was him. Good evening.
Do you swear, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I swear.
And your name for the record?
Earl McPherson, E.A.R.L. McPherson. My wife told me not to come up here.
Where do you live, Mr. McPherson?
3 Douglas Drive, Neptune, New Jersey. My wife went to school at that church. All of her family grew up here in Asbury Park. I'm standing here as a husband, as a beginning person coming to church with Pastor, Pastor Fidel. Give us the opportunity to build that church, keep the historical preservations, put a picture on the wall behind you, because there isn't one. I'm looking at some of the pictures behind you of wonderful Asbury Park. There is not one of the church. There's three buildings that are on the pictures behind you that are now torn down. Condos that people in this room, and people that grew up in this community, cannot afford. Give us the opportunity to save our church, have Pastor Fidel bring it up, bring some youth programs back into this town, and we can save this church. Please, just don't, just don't do it. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And your name for the record?
Rita Morano.
And, Ms. Morano, where do you live?
Oh.
Where do you live?
504 Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. Since 1969. My children grew up in that church, and it means a lot to all of us. Those pictures behind you of all the things you've knocked down over the years, they never should've came down, not one of them. This was a beautiful place, that's why I came here in 1969. But we were vacationing here before that. This was a beautiful town, and it still is. And the reason why we all have those lawns is because Bradley thought ahead to the day that if we ever got a flood, they would land on the lawn and not on the house. We should think about things like that, because he created a beautiful town. And he built three churches, and Holy Spirit was the second one he built. Trinity was the first one. I don't know what the third one, they said burnt down, but I don't know where that was. But this is a man that had a vision about Asbury Park. We're destroying it. Just look at those pictures behind you. All those buildings are gone. And Mr. Michaels donated that picture to the city of Asbury Park. He had a restaurant in this town. People should know these things. There's a lot of history here, and a lot of good people came here and built the town. And we shouldn't take that for granted. It's not about zoning, you only, we only could ask certain questions here. I mean, you have to think ahead, think outside the box, outside of zoning, and see what a beautiful town this is. If you noticed, all the streets are 100 feet wide up to the railroad. There's a reason for that, too, because they want the ocean breezes to go down Ocean Avenue, from Ocean Avenue down to the railroad and past. So there's a lot of history, a lot of good things are here, and we should think about that. And look at those pictures up there and see what we destroyed. And I thank you. I know you're all trying to do the right thing, and I know you will.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So, help me God, I do.
And your name for the record?
Robyn Many. I own a candy store on Cookman, and I have an apartment in Asbury, and I also live in Howell, New Jersey. I wanna thank you guys and all of you guys for showing up. I also wanna thank the developers, because what they did was to start a movement, a movement that James Bradley started way back when, when he came here. And he was not about money, he was a billionaire. And in his book, Fourth of July, The Promised Land, he is quoted as saying, "He built this city not because of money, but money was secondary. But he believed in faith, he believed in God, and he believed in community, and he believed in people, but he didn't make mistakes. And he did a lot of bad things, he did a lot of good things, but he did one thing, too. He brought a community together." So I thank the developers, I thank them for trying to come and invest in a city, a great city, a city that's based on faith. You picked a great city, but the city's not for you. See, it was only a couple of months ago that I met a few of you in my candy store, and you told me that you were, you bought the church, that you were gonna preserve the church, and the church was not gonna come down. And I said, "That's holy ground." And you agreed, the church was not gonna come down. But I could design the café. And I said, "Absolutely, God, if you want me to design a café, then I'll do it." That's the truth. The church will stand. The church will stand.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And your name for the record?
My name is Isaac Friedel. I'm the pastor of Shore Christian Church in Asbury, and the founder of the Jersey Shore Dream Center in Asbury Park as well. I live in Wall Township.
Proceed.
Yep. So our church and our dream center has been in Asbury Park for almost 13 years, and we have done incredible work in Asbury Park. A lot of people that are on the planning board have seen that. The mayor was at our bike giveaway we did at Springwood Park a couple Saturdays ago, where we gave out 150 free bicycles to children in Asbury Park. We have served this city very well. And we, more than anything, do not wanna see this church demolished like every- this church demolished like everybody in this room, like a vast majority of the city of Asbury Park, that we want to preserve this history, we want to see it remain as a church and continue to do the work that it was intended, uh, to be used for. And, uh, we believe that we could and, and we have made an offer, uh, to the developers to see that church preserved and also give them the land, uh, to be able to develop, uh, for their profit as well. So we believe that, uh, we could do both, that we could preserve this church like everybody in here wants, I believe what the city wants, uh, not to see another historical building destroyed, have it be used to help the community, help the children, help the next generation in a very powerful way, um, and not have to take the entire, um, lots and also give that to developers, developers to be able to develop into whatever they see fit. But this doesn't have to happen. We don't have to see this building destroyed. Uh, we could see it remain a church and see it thrive as a church and, uh, uh, we are all praying and believing that the planning board will also want to see that happen. Thank you.
Hold on a second, Tim. Uh, I mean, Eric.
Sorry?
Tim sits over there on zoning board nights. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your name for the record?
Jeff Condit, uh, Fort Tensueal Avenue, Asbury Park.
Let's spell your last name, please.
C.O.N.D.I.T.
Thank you.
So unlike a lot of the people here, I'm relatively new to Asbury Park. I've only been here six years, but in those six years, I've become a mega-fan of this city. I think it's the greatest city. I have a home here, I'm, I'm a member of the Shore Christian Church. I do some things for the city as well. And when I heard this was happening, I had no idea, you know, the church, I, I'd never been to the church. So I said, I want to take a walk over there and take a look. And when I saw that church, I was stunned, absolutely stunned. That's the kind of church you see in cities, major cities. I mean, it's almost like a St. Patrick's. I was so stunned that we're actually thinking of tearing that down, I was flabbergasted. Um, so obviously from my own personal viewpoint, I can't see how the city can tear down a building like that. I really can't. Uh, for Isaac, uh, Pastor Fidel, I think everybody in this room or a lot of people in this room know what he's done and what he can do. Can you imagine what this man can do with a church like that? It could be amazing. Amazing works could happen. I've seen this man do amazing things and I plead with the board to think about the beauty of that building, the uniqueness, uh, the fact that that church could be torn down is, like I've heard other people say, it's, 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 it would be a travesty. So, um, I, I hope the board reconsider's. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to be, provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And your name for the record?
Margot Pennella.
How do you spell your last name? And where do you live?
Uh, Jackson. Yeah, I, I've been going to church, uh, Pastor Isaac's at the, um, in Asbury Park and I've seen the work that he's been doing and as a team that we've all been doing. And, um, I know these condos may be beautiful, you know, after they're built, but I know his heart is for the people in Asbury Park. His heart and our heart as a church is for that person that doesn't want to live anymore, that person that may need help, that's on drugs, that person that don't have a family. And that's what the church is all about. The condos aren't going to be able to do that. Yes, it may bring up, bring in money, but those condos, beautiful condos can't help that soul that really needs help and that's where Pastor Isaac's heart is. His heart is to help them and our heart as a body of Christ, we are there holding his hand to help. And, you know, we're begging you to reconsider because Asbury Park may not need another church, but it's, the church to us is like a hospital. We're not looking at it like a church, we're looking at it like this is a hospital for those in need. These are, these are, uh, this is a hospital for those that need healing in their heart or their souls. And that's what we want the church for. It's not to say it's a beautiful building, we want that church to help people. The condos, yes, again, they might shine beautiful at night, but what about the people that are lost in Asbury Park? And there's so many, because we've done outreach in Asbury Park. There's so many people that need everybody, every person in here that belongs to the church. God bless you.
Anybody else for public comment?
The name is Robert McAllen and I do. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Wall Township, by the way. Uh, I've been entwined with the city of Asbury Park since I was four years old. I went to school in this town and I worked most of my career in this town and I always have had a love for this city. Uh, I will give you compliments as a council and also as a board. I used to serve on it many, many years ago. Uh, you've done amazing things. Uh, I was here for many years at the low point in this city's history and worked very hard back in those days with a lot of people in this town to try to bring it back to what it was. I was president of the Chamber of Commerce for several years too, at the same time. I think you've done amazing things to bring it back. There are some things, however, I will look back on my career working with the city, decisions that I helped make that were good. One of them happens to be this municipal complex. Others were some of the zoning decisions that we made that frankly, I go back and ride around the town and regret to this day. And I think you will have that experience if you allow this church to be torn down. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to say this to you very succinctly, this is your Pennsylvania Station moment. Okay? And people in New York City have regretted that decision for many, many years because they didn't follow the policy advice which you happen to have on the books in this town about trying to preserve historic buildings and prevent the subdivision of historic structures. So I implore you tonight to consider what vote you're about to take and the impact it's going to have on the residents of the city and its religious institutions. I give a lot of credit to the Shore Christian Church for what they've been able to do in this town and I hope you take that into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you very much.
My name is Alan Meyer. I'm from Syracuse.
You swear or affirm that?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I am a history teacher. I have studied a lot of the history of the state of New Jersey and I, um, have heard our, our expert tonight and much of what he says is true and, uh, but you have heard one expert. This is a legal issue that, um, shouldn't result in the destruction of a historic building. If it's going to be made, it needs to be made by a court of law. You've heard only one side of the story and some cross-examination by, uh, one of the attorneys who is objecting, but a court would hear all of the evidence. And if that becomes necessary, I ask this board to let that happen and that means it's a vote of no. The only way it goes into court and preserves this building is if you say no. It would be irreparable harm if you decide yes tonight, because while the applicant has correctly said it wouldn't happen tomorrow, once you give the approval, the demolition's not far behind, unless a court intervenes. So I ask you to do the right thing. Put this evidentiary issue where it belongs, in a court of law.
Motion to close?
So moved.
Okay.
As, as we indicated, Mr. DeSanto does want to make the final comment in the, in the public session, so why don't we allow him to do that? It's closed for everyone else other than Mr. DeSanto at this point.
Yes.
I'd like to thank the chair and the board for the opportunity.
I do have to swear you in.
Oh, I apologize.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I, I do.
And for the record, your name again?
Does he get more than three minutes?
I'm an, I'm an objector, this is a closing argument, I believe I get as much time as the, as the applicant.
Speak into the mic, please.
I'm sorry, I believe I get as much time as the applicant, which is not three minutes.
Understood.
Just to be clear, I thought Mr. DeSanto was representing himself pro se, so therefore he's not represented in entity and therefore he's a member of the public, so he'd be limited to three minutes.
No, I'm a member of, I'm a member of the bar, pro se, and I'm, and I'm representing myself as an objector. I put in a case.
Are you stating on the record that the bar is representing, you're representing the bar?
No, I said I'm a member of the bar, representing myself as an objector who put in, who put in a case and you stipulated my evidence in, 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 into, I'm sorry, my report into evidence. I'm an objector with a case, just like you, not just a member of the public, I get as much time as you do.
I disagree. I'll leave you to turn this to the board attorney.
I am personally, personally, I am fine with him having the time that he needs. I would just ask that we be cautious about how, what we're talking about and let's keep it relevant.
I'll try to hit the three minutes if I can.
That would be, go for it.
I'd like to note first that Mr. Kravis testified that he is a member, and he is, of the Monmouth County Historical Commission. That's appointed by our Board of, uh, County Commissioners and I'm going to read you for a second, that group's mission statement. Monmouth County Historical Commission, established by the Board of County Commissioners in August 1988, the Monmouth County Historical Commission is dedicated to the preservation of the county's rich historic heritage. He's a member of the board that says, as advocates for the preservation of historic properties, sites and projects, the commission encouraged citizens to be involved as well. What in the holy name of Bishop Francis Asbury is this man who's on our, our county commission for historic preservation of buildings, selling himself to a developer to knock down the most historically, uh, architecturally and culturally important building in the county? Why, why would he do that? And I, I implore everybody to contact a hundred people tomorrow and contact Tommy Arnone, the pre-order director, and have him fire this guy, because he is not for historic preservation, he just sold himself to knock down our building. Please do that. I ask the board to note that in all contests where there are two experts testifying, it happens in court every time, just because someone's an expert doesn't mean you have to accept their testimony. There's testimony still has to make sense to you. In every case of an injury, two orthopedics with different opinions testify. In every case of a building, two engineers with different opinions testify. So just because he calls himself an expert, or I call myself an expert in law and government, doesn't mean you have to accept either one of us. You have to look at what makes sense and make your determination there. You tasked us both with giving you reports on what was the status of Mr. Bradley and I always tell juries, one of the way you can decide whether to believe an expert or not is his willingness to concede simple issues that work against him. If he argues, if he monologues, if he tries to avoid the question, he's probably trying to not tell you the truth. How long did it take him to respond to Mr. Shana Mayo to find out whether or not there was any land use laws in Asbury Park? He knew the answer was, he didn't know, but it must've taken ten minutes worth of cross-examination from Mr. Shana Mayo for him to finally admit that. He's a historian who says if, who first of all, doesn't seem to know that it, there's tens of thousands of cases, but only a few of them get reported with a citation. He didn't seem to know that and he actually tried to testify and ask yourself if this makes sense. When you're looking at a historical record and there is no reported decisions, you can look at newspaper accounts of the time. I'm shocked that a guy calls himself an historian and said that you can never look at a newspaper account. Does that make sense to you? Or was he trying to win the case because he's getting paid? That's what he was trying to do. He didn't concede anything. If you're looking for a reason, and I hope you are, to deny this application, remember, defendants never have to testify. You've seen it in celebrity trials, a defendant can sit back and say nothing and win. In every civil case, they don't have to put on a case. You tasked this company with coming back to you and answering the question whether Bradley was operating as government or operating privately. And most of his answers in the end were, I wasn't tasked with doing that. Yes, you were. That's why we had to put last week's hearing off. That's why you gave him the privilege, this, this company of opening up a case after they rested. That's extraordinary relief you did. You could've told him last week, you rested your case, we're going to rule, but you said, okay, come back and give us this information. They come back with a title expert who unlike me is not an expert on laws. I have a doctorate in laws, I have a bachelorate in government, I have been published more than 2,000 times on law and government in such wide variety of things as Gannett, which is on the political left, on, on, by, by, uh, Condi Nast down the middle and Fox, which is on the right. And, and I came to you as an expert to tell you that James Bradley absolutely was acting as government when he did this and doesn't it all make sense? How can he offer you evidence that building a sewage system means you're private? Doesn't that just smack you between the eyes as being the opposite? That if the guy built a sewage system, he most certainly was the government and every publication you can ever find about him says that he was the government and more importantly, it is true. In 1879, when they formed Neptune, they killed Asbury Park's charter and they didn't have a new charter until they finally, under the Borough Act, reestablished themselves, uh, in, in, uh, 1893 as a borough again. And then a few years later as a city because they became more powerful as a city. So between those times, 1879 and 1893, he was the government. Um, because they, whether you, whether, whatever you think of the title and the setback issues or anything else, you tasked them with, with the goal of coming to you and proving to you what Bradley was and he said he didn't want to. So I'm asking you tonight to vote down because he didn't carry his burden of proof. You don't need to give the actual answer, that's not your job. You gave him the burden of proof and he said no. So I ask you to vote no on this application, put the burden of appeal on them. Don't put it on me, don't put it on Shore Christian Church, they're the ones you tasked with it, they had the burden of proof, they came here and had the audacity to tell you, I'm a title guy, not a government guy, try not to answer our questions and never gave you the answer. So I'm asking you please to vote against this issue. Thank you.
I'm going to direct the attention of the board to the law because the law's all I have and the law is technically all I need to have here tonight before this application. A planning board's authority review in a conforming subdivision application is limited to determine whether the plan conforms with the zoning ordinance and the municipality's subdivision ordinance. The seminal case on this matter is Pizzo Martin Group versus Township of Randolph, 137 NJ 216. And I'm going to quote it, "The MLUL evinces a legislative design to require consistency, uniformity, predictability in the subdivision approval process. The legislative scheme contemplates that a planning board's review of a subdivision proposal, including a layout of the entire design, must be designed within the framework of the standards prescribed by the subdivision and, pertinent, the zoning ordinance." And then it quotes Goodfellas when it says, "To accomplish this legislative intent, the planning board shall, if the proposed development complies with the municipal site plan ordinance and this act, grant preliminary site plan approval." Pizzle then concludes, "Thus, under the MLUL, if no variance is required, the board must grant subdivision approval to a development application that complies with the design standards and other requirements of the municipality's subdivision ordinance and the MLUL," found on page twenty, two, two, two hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-nine of Pizzle Maintenance. "Has been stated a multiple time by myself and all my professionals, there is no historical designation that would thwart residential development for the subject site. This application is fully conforming. The municipal land use law requires that a municipality create a checklist. Once that checklist is deemed complete, the applicant then comes before the board to put on their proofs before the board. That checklist requirement at no point requested or entertained title review. Despite that, this board wanted us to put proofs on the record regarding the title to have a little comfort and more importantly, an understanding of the history of the subject property. And we did that despite the fact that this board has no jurisdiction on private restrictions." But even if we were to entertain those private restrictions and say to ourselves that they were controlling, although again, it is our position, it is not, those restrictions only relate to setbacks, two setbacks on Second Ave. and Bond Street. And even if we were entertained those, even if we were up to, entertained... And even if we were to entertain those setback requirements, we would still be allowed to develop our proposed application, which is contemplated to be a residential improvement on each one of the subdivided six lots." I want to bring back the attention to this board, and more importantly, I want to highlight the comments that I heard from not just this board, but more importantly, the public. We understand your position. We understand that your heart is involved in this project. We understand the emotional and sentimental value that this church has to you. It has always been our agenda from day one when we contemplate development for the site, to keep this iconic structure. Our number one goal was to keep it, repurpose it, so that it can stay for as long as our development projects state. Unfortunately, that project never gained momentum from this administration despite all of our best efforts. So as a last resort, our option is to proceed forward with the subdivision application. A subdivision application that's fully conforming. We hope that this board votes in the affirmative, and we always want to leave the door open for any further conversations to develop the site and keep the church. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close, public comment.
Second. And we'll open for deliberations.
Yes. Does the...
Do you move, Ms. Henry?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Does the, any planning board member want to make any statements or have any discussions? Or before we put this to a vote?
Well, I think we should, you know, take note of a portion of our master plan, you know, that says we should require preservation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings and landmarks. So we should keep that in mind. That everything that we do should be in accordance with our master plan as well.
But, you know, I think, to all the members of the public, there is nobody sitting up here who wants to see this church disappear. There is nobody sitting here who wants to see that building change in any way. We are, wait, wait. We are not here to decide that question of whether the church is worth preserving. We all know it is, we want it to stay. I am a 40-year member of this community. We are all long-term members of this community, we all care about this community. What we are being asked to do under the law is to decide if their application conforms with our zoning ordinance, and it does. It's an unfortunate reality, it's a sad reality. To the developers, don't do this. You have a chance to negotiate with our city council to come up with a plan that is better representative of what our community needs, which is affordable housing, historic preservation, community development. Those are the things we need. We do not need historic structures torn down, and we do not need six new single-family homes. However, our job is to decide if it conforms with our zoning resolution, and it does. It is not on a historic register. It is not designated nationally, it is not designated nationally, or locally, or at the state level. It is also an unfortunate reality, it should have been done. At some point, up to this point, somebody in the church organization, previous church organization, should have initiated an application to protect this church. We don't have that authority or that power, we do not.
And while Eric is absolutely right with that, unfortunately, it does take applications like this to spark a movement for also, for our citizens to work with our government to say, "Okay, what happens to the next one? Why, how can we prevent it from happening and make the ordinances for historic preservation tighter? What can we do?" We, as a board, as Eric says, have to abide by the law. Though, this is one of those cases where I wish we don't. Nobody, like Eric says, nobody wants this church to be destroyed. We would like to have the developers, as Eric said, to work with us to not destroy this church. But, once again, we are here to implement the law. The law states that they are allowed to do this. Anybody else? Okay. Another comment?
Yeah, Barbara, I think I'll make a comment.
Go ahead.
What Eric has said and Barbara has said is correct, but there is one other mitigating situation here. This application is directly in conflict with the provisions of the master plan. And the spirit, the master, and intent of the master plan will be destroyed by approval of this application. It's, as they say, the, the application does conform to the subdivision ordinance. However, when that building is removed and those six lots are constructed, it changes the entire complex, complexion of the neighborhood. The lots surrounding this church are entirely different. They're smaller in size, the buildings are smaller. By building six single-family homes on that site, it changes the entire complex of the, that neighborhood in that part of the city. And that is in direct conflict with the spirit and intent of the master plan. And I just...
You're right, Ben. You're right, you're absolutely right, it is in conflict with our master plan. But the master plan isn't the ordinance, the ordinance is the law. The master plan sells the vision, and the law says this is a conforming application. It's a sad, sad reality. And the city council and this developer have every opportunity. As the applicant stated, the door is open. There have been previous proposals to preserve the church. We know nothing about the negotiations, we know nothing about it.
And we would not be able to rule on them, even if we did, we are not aware of any of it.
And that has nothing to do with our board. The city council and this developer could come to an agreement about what the right approach to the site is, and it's not this, it is not this. And the city council has that position. This is a bad outcome, this is a terrible outcome. This is a terrible outcome. I have family members who have been married in that church, I went to church there as a child. I also went to Mount Carmel Church, and I'm not a church-going person now, but it should stay.
I don't know, the master plan says that the following historic preservation recommendations represent actions for the planning board that will advance or implement the historic preservation objectives identified herein. And one of them says, "require preservation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings and landmarks." I don't think, whether it's listed or not on any register, I don't think anybody in this room can dispute. That the church is a historic building in Asbury Park.
But the master plan is not the law, the zoning ordinance is the law, and we are bound by the law. The master plan is a vision that we should change the law to be in conformance with, and it has not been done. The current law allows this to happen.
Right, that's why this application should spark the movement. Is that true?
Members of the public, public comment is completely over. You cannot speak while this board is deliberating. You can listen, but you cannot speak. It's got to be on the record, and it's time for just the board to speak at this time. Thank you.
Does the board have anything else? Any other comments?
I just wanted to make a quick comment that, I appreciate everybody's comments up here, and certainly the public, a lot of the comments, and I don't think it's just emotion, I think the public has done a lot of research on this topic. I also don't think the developer wants to, from, I don't, just my, from hearing the whole case, I don't think the developer wants to tear down the church. My, and I don't think anyone wants to go to court. I also feel that, and I understand the law as well, and I understand the opportunity to negotiate. However, as a planning board, the way that we vote, then the developer doesn't have to, doesn't have to negotiate if we approve it. So there's no stopping, I mean, I know everyone on this board understands that. That's why it's a very painful place to be. I also, I don't know the developers at all, I just see you at every meeting, but I think that the character of the city is, really, has been, you know, in grave danger. And it's not, it's been this way for a long time. So for the public to have to hear that we need to fix our zoning, to do the historic, to get our master plan moving forward, I'm sure is a very painful thing to hear. But the master plan, although it's not the law, it is a guiding document for the city, and it was put together with the public's support. And historic preservation, not just designated historic preservation, but historic character of the city is written over and over again, how important it is to the value of economic development of the city. It's something that we all know, we hear you all say it, we all know it. There's just, to me, it's just an amazing shame that we're sitting here having this conversation, because there's really beautiful things that could happen with that site if we're able to, to not tear it down. I think the developer knows that. So I feel like it's putting a lot of challenges here at the board. But I do want to say thank you to the public for making your comments and for caring so much about the character of the city.
Absolutely. I think it's, we often lament the lack of public involvement in small applications and large applications. Some things we see here, we're surprised there aren't more people. And you are what makes our community unique. You are what makes our community special. And you being involved continually and consistently is what helps us move forward. And this is not, this is not the outcome we want, but we have to be guided by the law.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. Beekman, I would like to put some, I would like to put something in a, as one of the restrictions or one of the comments that I'd like to put in, no matter whether someone votes yes or no on this, I'd like to put something that mentions that this board is not really, is not ruling on whether or not the restrictions on prior deeds are, whether it's true or false, whether Bradley was acting as a government versus private, we are not making that decision. We are making the decisions based on municipal land laws. If legally that is something that is appropriate.
I'm making my decision on how I feel.
I think what the board chair is asking, that is, any motion that might be made would include an indication that the board is not making a ruling whether any restriction in the deed history
impacts us.
limits or impacts the development of this property, and that any decision that's made by this board is solely based upon the Asbury Park zoning ordinance.
Or, or it can be like...
It's a new one on me, but if it should go to court, does that weaken our case?
On the restrictions?
Yes.
And on whether...
I don't know why all of a sudden it could do this.
Well, see, here's the thing, this is where my concern is merry. Is if we make a decision based upon these things, we're going to hear case after case after, or I should say, application after application after application that says, "The Bradley restrictions apply," or "The restrictions in the deed history apply." It's clear in the law, in general, deed restrictions do not restrict what the board's role is. In general, deed restrictions are private matters. There is case law, actually, you know what, maybe for the record, let me read the Cox book to make it clear, hopefully this helps. I'm going to read the section regarding if the effect of covenants, judgments, and other regulations, and specifically Section A, and for the record, it's 19-3.4 in the Cox book. "Restrictive covenants in deeds. Sometimes a board may have before it a case in which the applicant seeks permission to use attractive land for a specific purpose, and it develops at the hearing that the property is subject to the terms of a restrictive covenant in a deed which forbids the use of the property for the proposed purpose. Such a restrictive covenant is in the nature of a private contract which may be enforceable either by the grantor of the owner's deed or by other property owners in the neighborhood. See example Davidson Brothers versus D. Katz &amp; Sons, 121 NJ 196, 1990, discussing the nature of an enforceability of covenants that run with the land, generally and specifically, the enforceability of a restrictive covenant arising out of a commercial land transaction. Such a covenant, however, in no way affects the jurisdiction of the zoning board to grant a variance. Thus, if a deed covenant prevents commercial use of a property, the board may grant a variance to permit such use. The grant of the variance in no way affects the validity of the covenant, nor the covenant the validity of the grant. Thus, the owner of the land, in a suit brought by owners in the neighborhood, may be enjoined under the covenant from using the property for the use for which the variance was granted. From the standpoint of the board, however, the existence of such a covenant is not a basis for a denial. See Davidson Brother versus D. Katz &amp; Sons, 274 NJ SUPER 159, Appellate Division 1994, Certification Denied 139 NJ 186, 1995, granting the variance despite the conflicting covenant and further finding the particular covenant there which would prevent the use of the site in an urban area as a supermarket to be unreasonable and against public policy. And see Tobin versus Paparon Construction Company, 137 NJ SUPER 518, Law Division 1975. By the same token, the board may not consider the existence of such a covenant as a hardship warranting grant of a variance. Proto Master versus Board of Adjustment of City of Hoboken, 3 NJ 494, 500-501, 1950. The existence of a covenant should have no bearing on the board's determination. But compare SUSEA versus Denville Township Planning Board, 238 NJ SUPER 66, 68-69, Appellate Division 1990, in which a subdivision had been granted on certain conditions limiting further development of the tract, and these restrictions were incorporated into a deed, the beneficiary of which was the public. It was held that the planning board could not later entertain another subdivision application which violated the terms of the deed covenant, but the applicant could seek removal of the restriction in the chancery division. And see American Dream versus Planning Board, 209 NJ 161, 168-169, 170, 2012, in which the court raised no objection to the party's agreement to apply SUSEA to the facts and also discuss the standards to be applied to the review of changed circumstances on remand. See further discussion in 13-6. Note that restrictive covenants are strictly construed and..." Note that restrictive covenants are strictly construed, and any ambiguities must be resolved in favor of the homeowner's unrestricted use of their properties. Steiger versus Lanochi, 352 NJ SUPER 90, common 95, appellate division 2002. Relying on Holman versus Torchinsky, 296 NJ SUPER 326, 335, appellate division certified denied 149 NJ 141, 1997. And Bruno versus Hanna, 63 NJ SUPER 282, comma 285 to 286, appellate division 1960. Accord Freeman versus Saffron, 443 NJ SUPER 128, 131-132, appellate division 2015. See also Bubus versus Cassin, 184 NJ 612, 624, 2005. Upholding a restriction and although agreeing with a strict construction precept, refusing to read the restriction narrowly where such an interpretation would defeat the obvious meaning of the restriction. Nonetheless, the restriction imposed is not easily deemed abandoned or modified by failure to enforce in all instances. However, a party's conduct, changed circumstances, or other relevant equities may preclude enforcement or warrant modification of a restrictive covenant. So the short of it is, in general, these deed restrictions, unless they came from the governing body, would not restrict what this board would have to apply when it comes to the law. What this board does have to apply when it comes to the law is what the zoning ordinance says. And I would reiterate that, what the zoning ordinance says. It doesn't matter what the master plan says. The master plan is guidance. It's guidance for zoning. The zoning ordinance is how the city council, in this case, and how the planning board makes referrals to the city council for zone changes and zone amendments. And you've been doing this all along, along with your annual, your master plan review that you're required to do at least every 10 years, which Asbury Park tends to do quite more often, or at least make modifications to their plan quite more often. So you're always making changes. So the bottom line is, the law in this matter is the zoning ordinance, and that's what the board is being asked to apply.
And once again, we're talking about preliminary approval.
Preliminary major subdivision approval, which still requires the applicant to make more significant plan submissions in order to comply with a major subdivision approval. In addition to that, as you all noted from the very beginning of this application, there are recommendations and comments from the board planners, which could be made as conditions of any type of a resolution.
Well, one thing that I would say that, if they should proceed, which I have my own feelings about, that you do, I'd like to thank our planner and our engineering firm to take those into account and the restrictions that they're stating, that what this should look like. I shouldn't say it, but I will, but I hope it doesn't come to that. I'm hoping that the developers and the city can come together, along with the other existing churches that have been represented here, that maybe something could happen here. Let's hope it can. And once again, this is only preliminary approval. Anything else before we vote? Okay. Let's go.
Motion?
Motion to...
So moved.
Motion to what?
Motion to vote.
But are you motion to approve the application? Are you motion to deny the application?
Motion to deny the application.
Motion to deny the application? There's a motion to deny the application on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Who? That was Mayor Moore?
Whoever.
Mayor John Moore?
The motion is...
So remember, the motion is to deny the application. So a yes vote is a yes vote to deny the application. A no vote is a no vote to deny the application. Okay? Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Yes. Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Eric Galipa?
Before I give my vote, I appreciate that this is going to fail. I'm glad it's going to fail, but I still feel that my decision is based on what I believe the law is telling me to do, and that is to apply the zoning ordinance to this application. And therefore, I have to vote in the negative.
No. Mr. Shanameo?
Yes.
And Chair Kerzak?
I'm of the same viewpoint, and I regret it as Eric is, and I have to vote no.
So the motion deny is approved on a 4-2 vote.
I'd like to...
Thank you for your time.
Members of the public, if you could...
Hold it, hold it, please, please.
Please, please, please. We're still in a public meeting.
We're still in a meeting. I have to announce that the next meeting is on September 12th here, 7 o'clock, normal meeting on September 12th. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Hi. We're all in favor.
Yes.
Thank you.